Finance meeting on, on March 2nd. We'll call this meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America,
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Okay, we have a few items on our agenda today. Uh, well, first, let me just say to the public. The public may send their comments before or after the meeting to the following email. And as you would in a public meeting, please include your name and home address with your comment. We do have one public comment that, that, uh, made a request to call in tonight, so we will allow that to happen, and that is in regards to the lights at Duglio Field. So seeing we have quite a few items on the agenda, and I was taking a look at it earlier. I want to change, change it up to make it run a little bit smoother, I think. So what I want to do is take item number four, the internal audit, and make it item number three, and take item number three and make it item number four. And then take the bonding resolutions, which are from item five and six, and make them seven and eight. And take the resolutions from seven and eight, item seven and eight, and make them five and six. Okay, and I'll walk us through that. So board have any comments, concerns?
Make that a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Jack. Can I have a second?
No, second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, appreciate the consideration. So this agenda has been changed, and we will move forward to item number three to hear an update on the internal audit, and we have Ms. Connie Saxel with us. Connie, thank you for being here.
Oh, thank you for inviting me. Good evening, everyone. Uh, Connie Saxel, Internal Auditor. I'd like to present the audit report for January through December 2020 this evening. During this time period, there were eight internal audits conducted, one of which was later amended. Additionally, there was one departmental survey conducted. The balance of internal audit time was also spent on the DPW independent audit binding and recommendations, capital planning, and tracking and submitting COVID expenses for state and federal reimbursement. A little over $952,000 has been received to date as COVID reimbursement, and I anticipate another $100,000 will be received by the end of this fiscal year. A variety of financial and accounting work was also performed as well. The recommendations included within my audit report were made to improve departmental operations, safeguard assets, promote the accuracy of counting data and records, and encourage compliance with town policies and procedures. All final reports were submitted to the head of the department audited, the chief fiscal officer, the chief administrative officer, and discussed with the town audit subcommittee. I worked closely with Lori Charlton, Chair of the Audit Subcommittee, and who is also on the Board of Finance to devise a user-friendly tracking mechanism, which outlines the audit recommendations, management responses, internal audit follow-up dates and comments. We refer to this as the audit matrix. The audit matrix has been provided to you in the backup this evening. Although all of the audit recommendations made within the reports have merit, I will focus on the most significant ones for you this evening. It's also important to note that management has complied with the audit recommendations made within the report for the first half, half of fiscal year 2020, which were reported to you, uh, in January of 2020. The first one is the employee credit card audit. The purpose of this audit was to strengthen internal controls over employee credit card purchases to ensure that they are for authorized departmental purchases, purposes reasonable in nature, substantiated by appropriate supporting documentation, and that they are evidenced by supervisor and department head review and approval. Internal audit recommended that annual training be provided to all cardholders and their supervisors. Policies, procedures, and the parameters surrounding credit card purchases, including details of acceptable and non-acceptable purchases, listing of approved vendors, requirements surrounding the preparation and submission of record reconciliation voucher packages to finance be incorporated as part of the employee training. In January 2021, the credit card policy was redistributed by internal audit to all town and Board of Education cardholders, supervisors, and department heads. Cardholders were required to sign and return a memorandum of understanding that they have read and understood the credit card policy and will comply with its terms and conditions. Internal audit provided cardholders with a top 10 list of most important points within the policy that they are required to abide by. Cardholders were notified that strict penalties will be applied if they are found to be in non-compliance. These penalties may include termination of employee credit card privileges, possible termination of employment, reimbursement back to the town for inappropriate or unauthorized purchases made, and other disciplinary actions. Number two, employee credit card survey. A survey of 108 town and Board of Education credit card holders was conducted to determine the absolute need for these employees to have a card. The survey was sent to cardholders, supervisors, and department heads. Internal audit discovered that three credit cards remained active but were issued to employees who are no longer employed with the town. It should be noted that no improper charges were made on these cards. Internal audit recommended that the three cards be immediately canceled. It was also recommended that human resources coordinate with purchasing to establish policies and procedures for canceling credit cards at the time of employee termination and separation. Further, a total of 12 employee credit cards from the survey were identified to be of low or not needed and should be canceled. Purchasing complied, and the 12 cards were canceled. In January 2021, a policy and procedure was established by internal audit whereby a tracking system was implemented between human resources and purchasing to properly monitor all credit cards issued to employees. Number three, food license revenue. Policies and procedures surrounding the collection, recording, and depositing of revenue from food licenses with streamlines. Specifically, all deposits of $250 or more are made on a daily basis in accordance with town policy. Further, the application for food license was amended to include the total dollar amount received by food establishments for ease of tracking and reference. In addition, if the food establishment is billed a late fee, then the method of payment amount paid and receipt number should be recorded here as well. This will establish better tracking of all fees charged and paid by food establishments. The Health Department agreed and complied with all audit recommendations. Number four, fat oil grease permit revenue. Food establishments in town are required to pay for a fat oil grease permit, which is also referred to as a FOG permit. Establishments who pay the required fee do not receive an actual physical license or permit and are not subject to any town inspections. Examinations of department files revealed that inspections had not been conducted, conducted since 2012. Failure to inspect the grease traps of these establishments by the Sewer Department leads to grease backups in sewer lines. Per state DEP, there were 10 grease backups reported in calendar 2019. Internal audit recommended that a physical license and also receipt of payment be emailed to all paying food establishment for FOG permits and to commence inspections of grease traps. The Sewer Department complied with the FOG permit distribution and receipt requirement, but due to insufficient staffing level, the inspections are not being conducted. In fiscal year 2019, an outdated list of food establishments was used for FOG per, FOG permit billing purposes, and as a result, 95 new restaurants were excluded from billing, resulting in a loss of revenue amounting to $10,225. Internal audit recommended that honor before May 15th each year, the Health Department provide the Sewer Department with an updated report listing all current food establishments who hold licenses in Fairfield to ensure that they are captured and properly billed for their FOG permits. Both the Sewer Department and Health Departments agreed and complied. Number five, the town's solar sites and associated cost savings and amended audit report of cost, solar cost savings. Internal audit initiated and conducted a review of cost savings attributed to 23 solar installations in town. Internal audit requested the average kilowatt per hour rate of electricity from DPW administration to be used for comparison purposes to the contracted kilowatt per hour rate paid for solar and determining savings. DPW administration provided the average rate for electricity at 17 cents per kilowatt hour. The methodology used by the department for calculating this rate was reviewed, and it appeared reasonable. Internal audit consulted the Board of Education Facilities Maintenance Manager and was told that this rate is correct and is the same rate used by them when entering into solar contracts. Internal audit used this rate in the cost savings analysis and deemed that the sites were reaping savings. Shortly thereafter, internal audit was introduced to an independent town energy consultant and requested that he review the 17 cent per kilowatt hour rate provided by DPW Administration as outlined in the original audit report. Internal audit was told that the 17 cent kilowatt per hour rate was inaccurate. Internal audit subsequently consulted with a representative from United Illuminating, who confirmed this as well. The correct rate for electricity to use in this analysis to determine solar cost savings was 11.86 cents per kilowatt hour, not 17 cents. Internal audit recalculated the cost savings using the 11.86 cents per kilowatt hour rate and discovered that six sites were not reading savings but experienced losses. Overall, however, a net savings was experienced for all sites. The report was amended and redistributed to management. A recap of savings from the old report to the new report is as follows. The old report, using the incorrect rate provided by DPW Administration, showed a savings of 181,000 for all sites. The amended report, using the correct rate, showed a savings of approximately $35,000 for all sites. Internal audit recommended that the representative from UI be consulted before signing any future solar contract to de, to determine if the rates per the purchase power agreement will achieve savings when compared to the rate for the average cost for electricity for this site. Internal audit is also recommending that future solar agreements follow town charter guidelines governing purchases. At a minimum, the town should obtain three quotes from different solar providers to ensure that the best annual kilowatt per hour rate is obtained. No new solar installations have been instituted by the town since the amended audit. Number six, the Burr Mansion. Audit review of FY '21 budget and FY '19 and FY '20 actual income statements, Fairfield Historic Structures Management Agreement, and the June 2019 financial statements. A review of these documents revealed that the rates determined by the Fairfield Museum for fundraising events, wedding receptions, et cetera, have not been reviewed since 2018 or by the Newtown Administration. Ideally, the rates should be reviewed every two years or whenever there's a change in administration to determine their reasonableness. The third floor leases for offices located at the Burr Mansion, there are three in total, expired in June 2017. New leases need to be drafted by the town attorney and exec, and executed by the first select woman per agreement between the town and the Fairfield Museum. Internal audit notified the town attorney that the three leases were expired and new leases are currently being drafted. Number seven, solid waste and recycling. A review of cash register operations. The solid waste and recycling facility generated 3.1 million in revenue during fiscal year 2020. The facility collects revenue via a computerized system known as PC scale and a standalone cash register. Customers who are required to reweigh at the scale after dumping garbage are allowed entry into the facility at the second checkpoint with a $0 receipt from the cash register. The $0 cash register receipt is not directly linked to, to the computerized scale system, which represents a weakness in internal control. This leads to potential whereby a customer could gain access into the facility and dump garbage with a $0 ticket and never properly weigh in at the scale and pay their required fee. Internal audit recommended that the scale reweigh ticket be printed directly from the PC scale system and not the cash register for entry at the second checkpoint into the facility. This will ensure that the customer actually weighed in their gross tailweight, tailweight at the scale house, which will be stored and recorded in the PC scale computer system and will also guarantee that payment will be received by the cashier upon reweigh at exit point. Number eight, the DPW garage parts room inventory and internal controls. A physical inventory was conducted of the DPW garage parts room in December 2020. All items were found to be properly entered into, into the computerized inventory system called Fleetsoft Professional upon purchase or depletion of stock. The parts room was neatly organized, and all items were properly stored in accordance with an inventory tag generated by the computerized inventory system. Internal audit recommended that a physical inventory be conducted on a regularly scheduled annual basis. Random checks of inventory stock should be conducted each month by the garage supervisor to ensure that items in stock agree to those recorded in the inventory system. DPW operations agreed and complied. Number nine, DPW Parks Division outsourced maintenance costs compared to in-house labor. It was determined that qua, the cost of two large projects conducted during FY '20, which used outside contractors, could have been performed cheaper in-house. Internal audit recommended, recommended that whenever large projects arise, DPW operations should determine if the work could be performed efficiently and, and effectively with in-house staff to reap cost savings by performing a time, materials, and labor analysis prior to using outside contractors. If this is not feasible, the special project should be properly bid in accordance with town charter guidelines. If time constraints prevent the execution of a proper town bid, then the work should be considered an emergency procurement and follow town purchasing guidelines. DPW operations agreed and will comply for all future large projects. Are there any questions regarding the audits? I know there's a lot of information.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Saxel. Thanks for putting that together. I know it's not the only thing you do at the town, so appreciate your work on this. Um, I think I'd like to turn it over to the Chair of our Audit Committee, Ms. Charlton, and then perhaps Ms. Claire, the Vice Chair. So, Ms. Charlton, any comments or questions?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Brown. Um, Connie, thank you, uh, again for all the work that you've done. Uh, you've done a great job, and we appreciate uh, everything that you've put into this process. You've had some
Thank you.
recommendations, and, and I know that the town is all the better for it. Um, I don't have questions on the report specifically. I'll, I'll leave that to my fellow board members. But could you just take a moment and, uh, explain the process for following up? Whoop, I see Connie might have, oh, okay. Um, can you just explain the process for following up, uh, for your follow-up to determine that, um, that these recommendations have been implemented the way that, um, the way that they've been, um, you know, represented to you? So do, uh, do you go back and re-audit any, any of these areas? Do you plan to go back and re-audit any of them? Can you just talk a little bit from a process perspective?
Yes, um, my, uh, process is initially I present a draft report to the department head, and, uh, usually other members of the department are involved. We meet, we discuss all the audit findings. Uh, we, uh, talk about the recommendations, how to improve operations in the department. And then if, uh, the department agrees with the audit report, I issue it as a final report. I give the head department opportunity to, uh, abide by the recommendations and implement them. Uh, usually the department head im, uh, implements the recommendations immediately. Uh, because they, the department heads usually are very, um, concerned about uh, initiating strong internal controls and implementing strong internal controls. So, um, usually I give them an opportunity to implement the controls. What I do is maybe a month or two later, I'll go back to the department. I'll, uh, discuss all the audit recommendations once again with the department head to see if he or she has initiated and implemented the recommendation. I also have them reply back to me in an email that they have, uh, implemented the recommendations. That way I have it also documented. And many times I do go back and I do sample checks to just verify that they have indeed performed, you know, the recommendation as, as issued in the report.
Thank you. And just to clarify, have there, have there been any situations that where you've identified an issue where, uh, something was not remediated? Or that you recalled it once and it was not?
No, I mean, sometimes, uh, recommendations cannot be implemented due to, uh, staffing levels. Um, or maybe it's a computerized, uh, software issue. But, um, no, the only, the only one right now that's open, I believe, are is the FOG permit inspection. Uh, due to staffing levels, they were not able to perform inspection. Um, other than that, they, the departments have complied. Um, and I have no open items at this time.
Thank you again, Connie.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Charlton. Any other questions from the board? Mr. DeWitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chris DeWitt. Uh, Connie, yeah, thank you for the report. Uh, I just, no question, but just a comment. You know, I know the last year or so, we've been having discussions about your time and, and how, you know, you, you don't always get to do the audits. But I'll tell you what, in this, in this quick overview, um, I, I don't, I can't see how anyone could listen to this just quick overview and not realize how important these audits are. Just the credit card report is amazing to me. Um, the fact that you figured out that we haven't renewed the leases in tw, since 2017 on the Burr Mansion, I mean, these are, these are real issues, and they may, they may sound inconsequential maybe by themselves, but in the aggregate, they can have huge impacts. So, um,
Yeah.
again, if there was ever a, a, a good, you know, explanation of, of why we need you to do audits as our auditor, I, I think you proved it tonight, so thank you.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I've been doing this a long time. So, uh, obviously experience, you know where to look, what to look for, and, um, that's how I find these audit findings and recommendations. I've been doing it a long time.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's clear, so thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Any further questions, comments from the board?
Mr. Brown, this is Jim Walsh. I'd like to ask some questions to Ms. Saxel.
Yep, welcome, Mr. Walsh.
Hi, Connie, how are you?
I'm fine.
And just echo my, just echo my colleagues', um, uh, compliments. Uh, thanks for the hard work on this. Um, obviously you found a lot of stuff this year, and hopefully will save the town some money. Other areas, we're just gonna have to start looking at a little closely, like some of the solar panel savings we've been being sold, um, by Mr. Bowman and others, um, over the years, which I never really quite believed because I never thought we really got quite enough information, but we kind of trusted them on it, and it's not, doesn't seem to be working out. Um, so I'm just gonna ask you some questions. I apologize, I'm driving in a car back from the airport right now, so, um,
No.
I break up. I'm going through Greenwich right now, so, um, I might break up, and I apologize. But, um, so let's just start with that solar panel stuff, which i, is really, um, kind of shocking, um, the fact that we're actually losing money at some of these sites. How is it that we're losing money at the sites? Do you know?
Well, well, uh, we, the town has entered into what is called a purchase power agreement for the solar sites. And some of the agreements, there's a flat rate, and the, and the rate remains the same over the term of the purchase power agreement. These are all 20-year terms. And some of the purchase power agreements have escalating rates as well over the years. However, um, the rate that we contracted with in the purchase power agreement is higher than the average rate per kilowatt hour for electricity. So if you're paying a higher rate for solar than electricity, obviously you're not gonna have a savings. You're better off with the electric rate than the solar rate.
Okay. Uh, and, uh, how does that work with, um, when you were trying to do your audit and you were properly going to DPW to
Yes.
find out what the rate we should use is and for you to do your calculations, and that number was erroneous. Who did you get that information from? Who's the one who told you what that rate was?
Uh, that was the Assistant Director of Public Work.
And who's that?
That, that is Mr. Ed Bowman.
Okay, so he's the expert for the town in this area? And he's always been the expert, right? He's been the one who's been meeting, he's the one that comes before all the town bodies and sells this. And he doesn't even know what the correct rate he should be using for savings is? Is that correct?
That is correct.
That's astonishing. That really is astonishing. Um, is he still employed by the town?
Uh, no, he retired, uh, in December.
Okay. Okay, but he's not doing any further work for the town, to your knowledge?
Uh, I'm not sure. I know he's still employed with the town part-time. Uh, I'm not sure in what capacity.
Okay. Um, I, I guess we should probably talk to Mr. Marsilio about this, Mr. Brown, because, you know, uh, we need people to know if this is your lo, expertise, and this is, you're the person in charge of these solar projects. I don't know how people are getting the wrong number of what we should be using. And it's just very concerning, and I would like to talk to Mr. Marsilio about it in the future. I know we got a busy schedule coming up, but I think we gotta bring Mr. Marsilio in about this. Because it's just, it's kind of egregious, to be honest with you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. I'm sorry, I was on mute. I heard you, and we will, we will do that. Mr. Marsilio is here tonight, but as you said, uh, we have a busy schedule, so we will
Yep.
follow up on that. I appreciate that.
Yep, okay, cool. Um, okay, separately from that, um, in regards to the credit card issue, thanks for looking into that as well. Do we, as a town, like, benefit from, like, giving somebody a corporate card? Like, my own company, we pile up points, so the business gets to use those points and stuff like that. Is that a similar situation, or do, correct?
Yeah, no, unfortunately, not with the American Express card that we use. We don't get any, you know, points or cash back or anything like that. But I believe
Okay.
finance, uh, was going to look into switching to a different credit card company where we could get cash back for purchases and things like that.
Okay, well, I, I know American Express does that, because that's the card I use, and I don't get to get the points. My company gets the points. So they do that. American Express does it. Um, I think you might need to just look into it.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's amazing how fast those points add up, especially with the size of town we are and that many people having credit cards. You know, we'd probably be able to build up, um, lots of points or, or potentially even return of dollars on it. Um, so that, that, that'd be good to somehow take a look at. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look into that with purchasing.
Okay, and then, um, I forgot to ask one question in regards to the solar matter again. Okay, and then, I forgot to ask one question in regards to the solar matter again. How was it that, you said we're gonna look at, your recommendation to the town is that we should be, next time we decide to do this, we should get three quotes from three different vendors, which totally makes sense.
Well, yeah, I think any future solar panel installation, we should consult with United Illuminating. We should also consult, we have an independent energy consultant. They have all the data, they have all the kilowatt usage over a many-year period of time. They can determine if the rates in these purchase power agreements are, are good rates and if they're better than what we're paying for electric. And if they give you the go-ahead, you know, then it, then you have, you know that you're going to reap a savings. Also, you know, we, we never really looked to see if there's other solar providers that would give us better rates. So, you know, maybe someone else would have given us a, a better rate. You know, if you, if you don't look, you don't get. And, you know, we had this one company and we used them.
Yep, I totally agree with you on that. And, but I guess the question is, shouldn't we have been required under the purchasing policies of the town to have, like put an RFP out for this or something else like that?
Yeah, I'm not sure why that wasn't done. I'm wondering if because there's so few solar providers out there that do this. But I, I do recommend that purchasing, at least look into putting out an RFP to see if there are other companies that would provide these solar panels at cheaper rates.
Yeah, it just seems to me, I don't see why, I mean, clearly, it wasn't an emergency, so you couldn't get an exception on that.
Right.
Number two, I think that, from my knowledge, there seems to be a ton of these solar people out there. And, you know, I mean, I think all of them come into our door three times a week. But, but there's a lot of solar companies out there. It just seems odd that we kept using the same one without getting an RFP and maybe, is our purchasing director on the phone right now or on the, on the call?
Uh, no, I don't see his name.
Okay. Well, maybe we can-
No, that would be Gerald Foley.
Okay, so when we get-
You might have lost Mr. Walsh. But Mr. DeWitt, yeah, yeah, Mr. Walsh has a question on the, on the purchasing policy, maybe you could jump in.
Yeah, I, I can, just, just speaking as the, as one of the, you know, committee members for the new purchasing policy, I know one of the issues that I brought up, and I think Ms. Charlton highlighted it as well, is, you know, you have to put on RFP for everything, right? So that's gonna be in the new purchasing policy. When, when you have a, a small number of companies, right, you have to put out a sole source acquisition. You, you just don't get to say, oh, Chris DeWitt's the only guy who does solar panels, let's give him the contract. You have to do a sole source, sole, sole, sole source, my goodness, authorization, which basically says, I've looked at four companies and no one was willing to do it, so, you know. So, you know, in, in, in the long run, when we're all done with these purchasing policies, I think Mr. Walsh's concerns will be addressed at least in the, in the policy.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mr. DeWitt. I would like also to know, historically, since we just have done an audit on it, how did this go off the tracks on only getting one company? Because it seems like we got taken advantage of, to be honest with you.
And, and, and I, just to respond to that, if you don't, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, even if that's not in the purchasing policy, anyone who's been in the purchasing world for any amount of time would always go out with RFPs. So it, it should have been considered a best practice. So I, I, I think your inquiry is, is worthy of, you know, is merits or response, anyway.
Yeah, because I personally think it's, it's, you know, an insult and anti-competitive to the other solar companies that are out there, that they didn't get the opportunity, despite the fact that our purchasing policies. I'll wait to hear, hear their response from the purchasing director. We're not followed.
So, Mr. Walsh, I think Ms. Charlton has a follow-up as well on this same topic, and then I'll come back to you. Ms. Charlton?
Thank you, Mr. Brown, Lori Charlton. Yeah, I think Mr. Walsh and Mr. DeWitt both raised good points. I think part of the problem with the old purchasing policy, and quite frankly, this, you know, you can blame the same thing for kind of the fill pile contract as well, is that our purchasing policy was designed to require levels of approval based on dollar thresholds. So when you're, you're paying up, you know, and you're paying a dollar amount upfront for something, then various thresholds and, and levels of approval come in. You know, when you're not, in other contracts, like for example, the fill pile, right, that, you know, that didn't require an outlay of money. And so, you know, the theory was that it didn't have to comply. And so, you know, this contract may have been looked at the same way because it was a service and it wasn't, you know, an upfront outlay. And so, back to the, the point of revising the purchasing policy, one of the things that we need to do is look at some of the issues that have come up in the past and use those as lessons in, in making sure that they are in fact covered by the new purchasing policy and we're not simply, you know, requiring the appropriate level of oversight just based purely on dollar amounts, but based on other things, including risks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Charlton. Back to you, Mr. Walsh, if you have a follow-up on this.
Yeah, sure. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, you can hear me.
Okay, okay. So the other, Ms. Saxel, thank you again for pointing out the whole FOG permit problem. Certainly, I didn't realize that that was going on, and I guess no one did, since it was going on. You say it was going on since 2012?
Well, the last FOG inspection was 2012.
Okay, and somebody at DPW, I presume it's the director? I don't know who it is, but someone just made a decision, we're not gonna do FOG permit inspections anymore. Then that had to be, you know, if they were being done, and then they weren't being done, I don't think everyone just forgot about it. It was, somebody had to make a, a choice on that, correct?
I would imagine, yes.
Okay, and I presume that wasn't, I mean, I, I presume the administration didn't know that was going on. I mean, we've had a couple of administrations since 2012. But, and I don't know-
Well, I believe, yeah, they did know what was going on. There are minutes to meetings where they discussed that they were going to reinstitute the inspections and, you know, and then it never happened.
All right. Mr. Brown, maybe it'd make most sense, I don't want to waste a lot of time on this because it really comes down to the administration, the current administration, about where they want to go with this. Because you, DPW's throwing up their hands saying, we don't have the manpower. And then that becomes an administration issue on whether you want to make that a priority or not make it a priority about ever doing it. Or whether we're just gonna tell, just stop doing it, just because DPW's saying we don't have the staff. So I think one, we have Mr. Marsilio in, that we have the administration in as well, to figure out where this is all going. Because, you know, I, I, Ms. Saxel did what she was supposed to do, but there's no agreement by DPW that they're gonna reinstitute them because they're saying they don't have the manpower. So either we've got to figure out what the problem is, how much it would cost and things like that. I think we have to have Mr. Marsilio and we have to have First Select Woman Cupchik on the phone as, I mean, at our, at our meeting as well, and figure out what, what we're gonna do about this. Because we can't just take this report now and shove it in a drawer and not do FOG inspections.
So what we'll do, Mr. Walsh-
That can't be the answer.
Right. We'll, we'll do a follow-up. At our next available time, which will probably be after the budget, which is, which is coming up, you know, next week, and then we'll be through that at the beginning of April. And then we'll see, we'll get a follow-up at the first regular meeting after that. So, yes, it's important enough, it's important enough to make sure that we are, that we are following up on, on this because we've had numerous presentations in the past over these solar panels and the same. So, all right, thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Yeah, so maybe in the future, we'll just schedule that meeting and we'll maybe do a follow-up on what we want to hear back from Ms. Saxel's report, which was very educational.
Thank you, Mr.-
And I appreciate that, Ms. Saxel.
Thank you. Just, Mr. Schmidt, you want to weigh in?
Yeah, just two things really quick. First of all, I want to say thank you to Connie for, for all her efforts over the past year working on these audits. Among all the other things she does, it's a, it's, you know, this is really great work and we're, we're glad to have her and lucky to have her. So thank you, Connie. Second of all, I just, I just want to point out that with, through the guidance and the initiation by Mr., by Tom Bremer, that we did this audit report, who asked Connie to proceed with this. Because I think he had a lot of the same concerns that everybody's pointing out. And that we, you know, since, since this has come out, and even before that, we haven't taken on any of these new contracts and haven't done any, any more with solar power. And, and definitely, as Connie pointed out in her, in her audit, that there are a lot more protections now if we do, in fact, decide to go forward with anything. So I just wanted to make those couple of points. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Brown, can I ask one more question of Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, Mr. Walsh?
Yeah, wasn't there a recent Board of Education? They wanted to put another solar station at one of the schools that was, ended up being pulled from our agenda?
I believe you're correct.
Okay, was that pulled because of the problems that were uncovered by Ms. Saxel?
I think that definitely was a factor in it.
So, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Papad George is here, and since we're on this subject, on that question, Angeles, can you answer that question for us?
Yes, absolutely. You, you are correct. You hit the nail on the head. We did, when this report came out, it identified some issues. So we, we pulled it off of all the agendas to go back and reevaluate it and look at what numbers we should be comparing it to, to see if we are gonna see savings in that new projection for the solar port. It was at Tomlinson Middle School we were looking at.
Thank you, Mr. Papad-
Mr. Papad George, do you have schools that, where there's solar panels like this that you're losing money on?
Uh, we, I believe, and please don't hold me to this, but I believe we have two, off the top of my head, that are not meeting the 11 cent, so that is what we are looking in as well.
Okay. It just, it seems to me there should be a moratorium right now on any new solar stuff until we get our hands around this a little bit better.
We are in agreement with that.
And I believe the town is too, sounds like so.
Okay. But once again, Connie, thank you for all your help on this. I just had a busy year doing a lot of this stuff, but you found a lot of compliance issues. So it just shows you how important your work is. Do you feel like you, like if you would do more, there'd be even more stuff? Or you think this was just an unusual year of stuff that you found in, in doing audits on a yearly basis?
Um, no, I have, I, I actually have a few on the burner that I'm looking forward to, you know, conducting. But, you know, it's time. You know, it all depends on how much time.
Yeah, I understand.
You know?
Yep.
I may have some time to do one or two that I really want to get my hands on, but again, as I said, you know, there's so many other, other, you know, financial work and accounting work that has to be done, so it's, you know, it's all time-related.
Um, yeah, and I, and I, I understand that this is not the only job that you have at being the town, town auditor. You have, you have other responsibilities and, and Mr. Schmidt, I guess, will guide you in that and what he wants you to do. But I do say that it, it does point out, the sooner we get some of these audits done, the better, because like on the solar stuff, we might not have done some of these solar projects if we had realized that we were actually losing money, that we weren't using the correct numbers, you know, and things like that. And some of the DPW policies would have maybe come to, can possibly come to light quicker on some of this stuff as well. So, so it just shows you the value of, of your work. And maybe, you know, there should be some urgency to get more of them done, but I mean, I understand that you're working with limited staff and, and you've got multiple roles in the finance department, so that will be something Mr. Schmidt will have to, I guess, address.
So, Ms. Saxel, who, when did you start the audit on the solar panels and, and who actually ordered it?
The first run-through, when I looked at the solar panel, I believe was, I looked at solar panels in January, I looked at the rates that they were, what solar provider was billing to ensure that they were billing the correct rates in accordance with the agreement. And then I went back and I did, Mr. Bremer did ask to see if there were savings related to these solar panels. And of course, I do not profess to be the solar expert. And, and, you know, the method of obtaining the 17 cent rate did appear reasonable, you know. I looked at the calculation and it appeared like, yeah, this, this seems like a reasonable calculation. It appeared accurate. And luckily, you know, but I wasn't quite 100% convinced. So I continued my research and I was discussing with the Director of Purchasing, and I said, I don't know if I feel comfortable with this rate because I really can't verify if it's, it's correct. And he says, well, I have a town energy consultant that I work with, why don't you give him a call? And I called him and he told me, you know, he recalculated, he came up with a, a rate, and then he gave me a consultant over at United Illuminating. I called him and, you know, he went through and he gave me the 11.86 cents and sure enough, you know, I had to amend the report. But, you know, this is why we use professionals and consultants and people who, you know, that know their field, so that way we don't make mistakes, you know. Perhaps if we had consulted with United Illuminating, you know, we would have known, you know, we would have had a better field for what we were getting into with these agreements.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Saxel. Mr. Schmidt, you had a follow-up, and then I want to try and, I want to try and move on.
Yes, just very, really quick, just to give some people comfort, because I, I know it's been brought up a couple times, and I know the First Select Woman has effectively put in place a moratorium so that we can reevaluate the program, looking, looking at Connie's audit and, and just looking at, looking at those initiatives overall.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. You know, Mr. Walsh, just want to offer you one final comment, if you have one on this, before we move on.
No, I was happy to hear Mr. Schmidt say that, you know, the First Select Woman's put a moratorium on that, you know, I guess, I guess somebody should look at some of these contracts to make sure that, you know, the other side has defaulted, because maybe we can get out of some of these now, especially the losing ones, the ones we're losing money on. But, you know, but I appreciate Mr. Schmidt taking, taking a look at that and letting us know, I feel a little more comfort knowing we're not gonna be doing any more of these until we get a handle on it. Thanks.
Should look at the contracts, thank you, Mr. Walsh, and see if there was any type of guarantee or, you know, what the provisions were, if it didn't work out. Um, okay, any further questions from Ms. Saxel? I am seeing none. Connie, thank you for being here. Thank you for the report. Appreciate you.
Thank you, everyone. It's a good to see everyone healthy and happy. All right, you have a good night.
We will, thank you. Okay, item number four, to hear an update on the Board of Ed fiscal year 21 financial position. Just as a reminder, this is a carryover from our quarterly meeting on the 16th, when we were reviewing a preliminary, a report on where the Board of Ed stood in its current Board of Ed budget and the projected balance at the time, I believe was negative 1.2 or $3 million, and I can be corrected if that, that's not- believe, was negative 1.2 or $3 million. And I can be corrected if that, that's not accurate. So, we asked for an update on a monthly basis, and we thanked the Board of Ed for providing an update worksheet. And we have Mr. Cummings here, we have Ms. Monzel, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services. And I believe I saw Ms. Vitale, at least earlier. Yep, I see her. She's here tonight as well. So, I will turn it over to the Board of Ed. Mr. Cummings, would you like to begin?
Absolutely, Mr. Brown. Thank you. And good evening, everyone. Mike Cummings, Superintendent of Schools. We've been working since our last meeting. Ms. Monzel can detail the efforts we've put in place, but she will be able to go over the report that was shared with members of the Board of Finance this evening. And we can also talk tonight after that about other steps we're currently implementing to reduce costs and review those, and review costs. So, Ms. Monzel, if you want to get started?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. First, I apologize for being late. I had some technical difficulty. So, the, the report that you received is an updated projection as of February 28th. So, what happened since 12:31 for the second quarter, we went from a negative 1.3 million to a negative 500,000. So, a delta of about 882. You can see the numbers here, the, the same, you know, the format of the report that we always use. So, I think it's more important that I explain how we got here. First of all, there's a hiring freeze. We have about 20 positions that are on hold. So, the salaries associated with those positions and the benefits, you know, is, is a good portion of this. There is one exception on the freeze, and that's a maintenance supervisor that we do plan to continue to fill. All the positions are, on hold are non-certified, except for just over 1, 1.0 certified teaching position. The rest are non-certified. In the maintenance department, where we got money is approximately $100,000 in paving that we will not be doing. We have released some money for about 210,000 for snow removal. We certainly hope that's over and done with. We do have insurance in our projection for one more event, if, if that happens. There are two projects that are on hold that are frozen. One is about $80,000. It's an outside dust collector at Ward, outside the wood shop. About 75,000 for the second floor concession stand renovation at Ludlow High School. And about 92,000 for HVAC system cleaning project that's on hold until after we get retro-commissioning. So, there's, there's a lot of money there. That's over $500,000. It's on hold to help balance the budget. We took travel reimbursement. We reduced that by $40,000. Tech training, just over 10,000. We updated our mail service expenses that saved us about 56,000. In the support area, we corrected those numbers. So, that's in there correctly now. The one thing that did get worse in the projection was special ed, and that deficit increased by about 200,000 since the end of December. So, that brings us down to the, you know, $500,000 deficit that remains. We still have not reflected in here, the school and district accounts are frozen. They, everything is, obviously, we need to expend funds to maintain instruction, but everything's on a case-by-case basis. And we'll do everything we can to, to, you know, save enough to, to cover that, the remaining deficit. Concerns moving forward, with a full rate return next week of school, you know, there's, there's, sub-costs could change with staff, you know, if, if we have situations where more staff have to quarantine, custodial overtime, utilities, we don't know how utilities will be impacted by this, tech repairs and services, you know, printer usage. So, there's things that we know that we'll have to look out for in addition to, you know, which will be, you know, maybe different than what we've experienced, you know, earlier in this year. So, the next update will be in the third quarter financial, which would be, you know, a month from now. And that'll give us a chance to see what the full reopening expenses look like, you know, under our current situation. So, I think that's it.
Hold on, I'm on mute. I was on mute. Did not know, and I apologize. But, a couple weeks ago, when we met, what was the projected deficit? I believe it was over a million. Am I right?
In December, it was 1.3.
Okay. Okay. So, we found, you found savings. And so, so currently, the projected balance is minus 500,000. And Mr. Cummings had mentioned that there's going to be more items put in place for future savings. Mr. Cummings, did you want to review those items? Are you ready to tonight?
Essentially, Ms. Monzel covered them. We, we have, as, as she mentioned, we've put a hiring, excuse me, spending freeze on most of our accounts, in order to monitor, our particular concern is the return to full-time instruction next week and how that might impact staffing. You know, we're hiring lunch aids, things like that. But we do have additional funds that are going to be frozen that we can apply to any growth in the deficit. So, this is just something we're continually actively monitoring. And we'll continue to do so with the Board of Finance.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Questions from the board, Mr. DeWitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chris DeWitt. Ms. Monzel, thank you, thank you for the, the report as, as usual. What, the, the report that stops with the tan line, that summates to $861,498 to the good, right? With the exception of the Remote Learning Academy up there, which, which I'll get to in a second, that's basically saying, if you're, if you don't consider the lower part, that's the, that's the non-COVID costs. So, if, if COVID didn't exist, this budget, you could be 861,000 to the good. That's accurate, right?
Yes, I'd say so.
I mean, in generic terms, right? So, so thank you for adding the Remote Learning Academy information. That's, that's, that's specifically, you know, that's very informative, at least for me. You also sent another form today that talked about the FTEs that, that I thought made a lot of sense. But the bottom line, in line 58, for me, is Remote Learning Academy, with all the puts and takes, with, with, with teachers that are, that would be normally in school or are going to go back to school on Tuesday, it's about $297,000, which, which frankly, I, I don't think is a, is a large expense, given what we're, what we're looking at. So, again, all, all the point I want to try to make is, not dealing with COVID, which is the gray, 51 to 59, this budget, this budget could be, could be in the black right now.
Absolutely. Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Questions from the board? I am not seeing it. On the, on the RLA unbudgeted certified staff costs, this is the second document we received, I think a little, might have been today, we received this document. Was it today? Okay.
It was, yes.
So, can we just go through this, if you don't mind, briefly? And tell us what, what this is exactly telling us? RLA unbudgeted positions, they had 24.4 full-time, at a cost of 1.6 million?
Sure. We, in the, in the budget book, for next year's budget book, you'll see, if you're interested, it's on page 149. We, we had to, staffing this year was so difficult to track, because we, we had to end up breaking up this year's FTEs between positions that were budgeted and, but used for RLA and positions that we had to supplement the RLA with that were unbudgeted. So, we have 24.4 unbudgeted positions and, and, sorry, we didn't have a chance to number these lines. There's, you know, there's the certified support, the admin, and then the teaching staff is the 24.4 that's in the budget book. We then had some adjustments since that December number, which you'll see kind of towards the middle of 1.6. So, we currently have 26 unbudgeted positions. We, and we have 39 and a half budgeted positions that are used in RLA. And the, the, down below, the numbers that you'll see there tie to the projection and come down to the, the 297.
Okay. Any questions from the board on this worksheet, Mr. DeWitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chris DeWitt. So, I'm glad you brought this up, Mr. Chairman, because here's how I read this. We needed, we need $4.8 million to fund the RLA. When all the staff goes back on Tuesday, we'll be burning at a rate of 4.5. So, we really only overspent by $297,000. And I say only, it's a big number, but in, but in the, the whole of this budget, I think, I think this is a, I think this is a good story. It's not like the Board of Ed went out, or, sorry, you know, Central Office went out and hired 24 teachers that we're going to have to lay off on Tuesday because they don't have anywhere to go. It, it appears, and maybe Mr. Cummings can tell me if I'm wrong, it appears as if these teachers are going to have somewhere to go on Tuesday when we're all back to school. Correct?
Yes, Mr. DeWitt, Mike Cummings, Superintendent. They, they are. I mean, again, the Remote Learning Academy is going to continue through the end of the year. It's, you know, a provision of the state reopening plans that we have to offer remote instruction. We're essentially doing that in two different ways, Remote Learning Academy for K-8, as well as synchronous instruction for K-12. But, yes, we're going to have, we are still going to have a considerable amount of students in the RLA. At one point, at the beginning of the year, it, again, it was a K-8 school, but we had over 700 students in the Remote Learning Academy. It was larger than even Tomlinson Middle School. So, yeah, there's a considerable amount of students still in there.
So, wait, i- if you can tell me, or if it's privileged information, just tell me. How, how many people do you, how many children do you believe will be in RLA come Tuesday when, when my kids are, are back full-time?
I'd have to get you that number. I think we opened up the, a possibility for K-5 students to return to in-person learning this week. And we've, we're calculating that number now. I believe we had 56 students leave this week to go back to in-person, if I remember that number right from this afternoon. We, later in the year, when the third market period ends for middle school, will offer that same opportunity to middle school students. We wanted to do it at a natural break. But I can get that number for you, get it back to the Board of Finance.
But if we started with 700 in RLA, it doesn't sound like that number's getting dramatically different. If you just said 54, so.
Yeah, there's been some changes over the course of the year, but, you know, and again, the many, many, many of the families who picked the RLA did so for very valid, you know, whether their own health concerns, children, extended family, you know, which is essentially why the state is asking us to make sure that we offer that possibility.
Yeah. And, and, and by, by no means am I questioning why any of these families are doing this. I'm just curious from a, you know, budget perspective. So, thank, thank you for that. And Ms. Monzel, thank you for this sheet, because this, this really answered the mail for me. When, the first sheet, when it said 297, this, this sent it home. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Any further questions on these worksheets? I am seeing none. Okay, so we're going to move on. Thank you, Board of Ed. But we are going to move on to bonding resolution for item number five and item number six, that pertains to our Board of Education. So, item number five, to hear, consider, and adopt a bond resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectmen, entitled a resolution appropriating $1,750,000 for the cost of a building automation system upgrade at Fairfield-Ludlow High School, and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation. Can I have a motion to put this before us, please, Mr. Chistani, seconded by Ms. Charlton? So, this motion is before us, and we do have bond counsel with us. Mr. Stastram, once again, thank you for joining us tonight. We heard from Mr. Papad George, he's with us. And again, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Monzel, and Chairman of the Board of Ed, Ms. Vitale's here as well. So, Mr. Papad George, let me just start with you. You, you presented this item at our last meeting pretty thoroughly.
Yeah, I believe it was two weeks ago.
Yeah, just two weeks ago. So, I'm going to ask, do you have anything to add to that presentation at all?
I do not at this time, but if there's any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Matola?
Yeah, thank you. My only question, I think I know what the answer is, but I, and I'm not being critical, Angeles, but there were some comments, I think in the paper, I think it's this one, that there was a catastrophic failure of whatever, the systems, and some parents thought that that was a catastrophic failure of the air system. And so, you get the comments that we're sending our kids back to school full-time, and the parents are concerned. Can you, can you just clarify that and put parents at ease?
I would be happy to. I, I believe I was misunderstood when I said that. What I was referring to is our ability for our computer systems outside of the building to log in and be able to see what is going on in the building. So, we still have the ability, the building is still running. We still have the ability to do local controls of the building. And we also have the ability still to verify with gentlemen going out to the building, going up on the roofs to verify items that, for some reason, we cannot verify through our remote systems at this point. So, the building itself, the air quality is still moving, the, the air circulation is still moving, the, the units themselves are still being preventative maintenance. We just finished a second quarter of that. So, everything is still operating in the building, per se, when it comes to the air flowing and the moving of air in the building. It's the controls and the ability to log into the controls where we're, where we see some issues. And again, we have redundancies to be able to go out and take care of that without being able to remote in when needed.
Okay. Thank you very much for that response. I don't have anything else.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matola. Any further questions from the board on this item? Okay, I'm seeing none. I'm going to read from the bond resolution itself. Resolved as recommended by the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen, the town of Fairfield hereby appropriates the sum of $1,750,000 to fund costs associated with a building automation system upgrade at Fairfield-Ludlow High School, which costs include but are not limited to planning, design, and engineering fees, and other professional fees, demolition, construction, and oversight costs, and temporary financing costs, the project, in the amount of such appropriation allocated to the project. And this is a 15-year bond resolution. So, all those in favor? So, all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So for the record, it is unanimous. We will go to item number six. To here consider and adopt a bond resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectmen entitled a resolution appropriating $3,653,150 for the cost of various Board of Education capital projects and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation. Can I have a motion to put this before us, please? Mr. Dewitt, seconded by Ms. Charlton. And on the bond resolution itself, and this is a 20-year, so the item's now before us. This is a 20-year bonding resolution. We have exhibit eight that outlines the projects. Number one is the Burr Elementary School, full roof replacement for $1,542,150. And item number two, Fairfield Ludlow High School student bathroom for $2,111,000. And I would assume that student bathroom is plural.
That is incorrect.
Okay, that's good. We're not turning the school into the rich for $2 million bathroom. Okay, excellent. Any questions on this bond resolution? See, and again, this was discussed at length in two meetings, really. Our capital planning workshop and then our, it was at a quarterly meeting, we had, we had a follow-up. Or perhaps in February 2nd, we had a follow-up. So we had two presentations of this item. So I'm, I'm asking any questions? I'm going to then read from the bond resolution itself. Resolved as recommended by the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen, the town of Fairfield hereby appropriates the sum of $3,653,150 to fund all costs associated with the various Board of Education capital projects described on exhibit A. Attached hereto, inclusive of planning, design, and engineering fees, other professional fees, demolition, construction, and oversight costs, and temporary and permanent financing costs collectively the projects in the amount of such appropriation allocated to each project as set forth in exhibit A. Any reallocation of unused bond proceeds from one project category listed as items one and two on exhibit A to a different project category listed on exhibit A that would cause the cost of such project to exceed the cost listed on exhibit A shall require approval by the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, and the representative town meeting. All those in favor of this bond resolution, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? So that passes unanimously. Okay, Board of Ed. I think that does it for you tonight, I believe. So Mr. Cummings, Ms. Monzel, Mr. Tally, Mr. Papa George, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.
It's too, thank you.
I thank you all, but we do have one other item on the agenda, so we'll be hanging out.
Which item is that? What do you want? Oh, you have a non-recurring. You have a non-recurring.
Right.
I forgot about that non-recurring. Good thing. That was $655,000, right?
Yes.
Okay.
One who was about to run.
Okay.
You're too honest, Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Papa George.
Okay, item number seven, we're gonna, yes, item number seven. To here consider and adopt the bond resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectmen entitled a resolution amending and restating the resolution entitled a resolution for the costs associated with establishment and operation of a Fairfield-Westport multi-town emergency communication center with town of Westport and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation to increase the amount of the appropriation by $1,116,940 to a total of $4,014,216. May I have a motion to put this before us? Mr. Dewitt, seconded by Ms. Marmian. Okay, thank you. This item is now before us. We do have some backup for this item, and I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Schmidt. I think I'll turn it over to you first, and we can go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you read the title of the resolution, this is to cut to the chase. It's to authorize an additional $1,116,940 in capital spend. I know there were, there was one question that came to me beforehand that I'd like to address really quickly. And this did come up in a way, in a form during the last meeting, I believe, when we, when, uh, we did the presentation of this. So the question was about the, so when, when we bring new towns on, what we're calling ratifying towns, and when they come into the, into the center, and the question was about how are the pension and OPEB being split? So essentially, I think this is what, what they're asking is whether or not the new towns would end up paying some of that. And the, the short answer to that is yes. We have, within the budget, we have a sort of non-ECC departmental costs, and this would be one of those where the cost for OPEB and pension are carried not within the depart, not within the ECC budget per se. But we have allocated a portion of those costs so that the, the towns, as we, when we come up with the formula, will be paying their proportionate share of those costs. So it is factored into the budget, and therefore, it's, it will also be paid for, and the costs will be borne proportionately by the towns that come into the, the ECC. There was also a similar question about the debt. And I would say the same, the same basic thing for that, which is that there's gonna be debt service that we, the town of Fairfield and the town of Westport are gonna have to pay for. And we are going to make an adjustment in the, within the formula to say that also, that the town, any new towns that come in have to pay a portion of that. I know, and it has come up about, you know, the idea of doing a, you know, a one-time fee to towns to come in, and I think that the problem with that is gonna be we, it's a difficult thing to price, to know how much a town would be able to for, to afford and to keep that consistent. So it's, I think it's gonna be eas- easier for us and actually more, more timely in the sense that we're gonna be get, we will be getting a portion of the debt service that, that we're paying out of our budget from the towns each year as part of what they pay into the center. So both, the answer to, the short answer to both of those questions is yes, that those costs will be reflected within the formula that, and what we end up charging to the new towns that come in.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schmidt, for that explanation. Are there any questions so far for Mr. Schmidt on what he just reviewed for us?
I have a question, Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Walsh?
Chairman Brown. So, Mr. Schmidt, so Westport and Fairfield are going to pay for all the capital expenses of the building, all the equipment inside the building. And that, is that 50% each, Westport and Fairfield?
That's correct. For the capital, yes. For the capital piece of it, yes.
So the way we're gonna get it from any of these participating towns, or whatever the term you use for them that join later on, is that they will, the bond expense for Fairfield and Westport will become an expense of the ECC?
So the, the expense will be, you know, we'll, we'll be paying the debt service on it. Fairfield will be paying our portion of the, will be paying the, the debt service on this, our portion of it.
I understand.
And then.
Okay. My question, I just wanna narrow my question, and I'm sorry if I, if I wasn't. So the Fairfield debt payment and Westport's debt payment, from the way I look at it, should become an expense of the ECC?
That's correct. Well, they, they won't be included within the budget. They will be an expense of the town. And we will have any of the, any of the new towns that come in pay their allocation of that.
And is that?
A proportionate amount of what they, you know, I'll say the service that they use based on population, call volume, whatever the ultimate decision is to factor into the formula.
So it'll be the same formula as all the other expenses for the ECC for these participating other towns?
That's correct. That's correct. So if a, if a town has, let's say, 7% of the population, if that's what we decide to do, they would end up paying 7% of our, the debt service that we pay.
Because that makes, that, that does make sense to me. Because if you're a smaller town, then obviously you have, I thought the formula that you, that was gonna become, that the people involved were gonna come up with in Fairfield and Westport was that it was going to be based on call volume and size of the town. So therefore, there shouldn't be any complaint that we apply the exact same formula to that cost for the debt and whatever. Plus, if you come in 10 years later, you're only responsible for the next 10 years worth of debt payment. Correct?
That's right. And, and again, we haven't settled on what that formula is, but those are two of the, two of the main things that we're looking at. We can't, and, and frankly, don't want to, because at some point, we will have to go into negotiation with these towns to figure out what the, ultimately, what they're gonna pay. And so, you know, I, I don't wanna go into, in, into a whole lot of detail about what the, you know, what dollar amounts are and which towns, those kinds of things.
Okay. When that structure is, is established, or that formula, will you review that with the Board of Finance before it's finalized?
So the plan right now is to, for us to come up with the formula and to, there, there, we'll go through the, the typical process, which would be that we would enter into contract with one of the, with whichever town is trying to come into the ECC. And then that contract would have to get approved through the normal, normal process.
Okay. So it would have to come to the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, and the RCP?
I don't believe so. I believe in that case, it would go to the Board of Selectmen only. There's not a, and I, I could, I could be corrected on this, but I, I believe because there's not, there won't be a cost to us. So I believe that the contract would have to go to the Board of Selectmen only.
Okay. I'll take, I'll take a look at the charter in that regard. But I would, I would think it would be wise for that to happen. And at least for the Board of Selectmen to get some consultation with the Board of Finance. Because we'd hate to get into an agreement, and then every budget year, be saying that this was a horrible calculation. Which happened, to be quite frank.
And just, you know, generally speaking, our goal is to come up with a formula that is number one, obviously reasonable and acceptable to the other town, but that, that is going to financially, you know, put us in a better position and.
Okay. See, it's interesting. But I, I think, I just wanna be clear. Since you're asking us to approve bonding for this, but you're not telling us of all the finances and how this is all gonna work. You don't have the agreement that they agreed. And therefore, I'm having a hard time, want, you know, as much as I wanna support this ECC to saying that it's financially sound, and financially sound to our taxpayers, making sure how we're gonna recruit it, unless I see what this formula is. That's the problem I'm having. And I'm just being very honest about it. You, you're asking us to take a leap of faith and saying, oh, we're gonna make it up some later time. Oh, and by the way, it's never gonna come back to you. It's just gonna be the Board of, it's just gonna go back to the Board of Selectmen. So that's my problem, and I'm having, I was hoping to hear something tonight that would give me more comfort, or that it was gonna come back to us, but I'm not hearing that. So unfortunately, right where I'm sitting right this second is to say no, come back to us for the bonding after you have the formula created, after we know more about this agreement and how it's gonna work.
And, no, again, with regard to the formula, I don't think that's something that we would want to reveal publicly. I wouldn't feel comfortable revealing that publicly during a, a meeting to be reviewed, because we would, we would be taking that formula or some formula into a, another town into a negotiation, just like any other negotiation. That's not something that I would be comfortable revealing.
Okay. And then what I'm uncomfortable with that is that we're a public organization. We, our taxpayers should know how this is gonna work. And it shouldn't be a negotiation in regards to whether another town gets a better deal because they're trying to cut themselves a better deal. The number should be what the costs are. And either you're a partner in the project, or we don't want you. That's the way I'm looking at it.
So, and just, just to be.
Bringing a lot to the table, to be honest with you.
To, to be clear, once we have that formula in place, our goal is to just keep that formula in place, that it would be consistent for any, any towns after that. We don't wanna have, we don't wanna be in a situation where we're cutting new deals with each, each town differently, so that when, you know, when a new town comes, that, that, it's just not gonna create a, a good situation for us if we have to, if we end up doing that.
So tell me why you wanna hide this from, from our taxpayers and from basically us, actually, because we have no role in it. You want us to approve it, but you wanna hide it from us and the, and the taxpayers of the town. I don't understand why this is such like a, like, this is not like an employee situation where there's employee privacy rights. This formula should just be out there.
Did you say I wanna hide it from you? Did you say I wanna hide it from you?
Yeah, we will have no, you want us to approve all of this funding tonight, a number that's gone up about a million bucks since last six months. And now you wanna come up with this formula, this mysterious formula, which I don't even know why, it, it's not even that complicated to come up with. We've talked about what the formula should be tonight. So I don't understand why you wouldn't wanna come back to us and, and tell us what the formula's gonna be. And, and let the taxpayers know. Have the, have the formula just be right out there. The other, the other participating towns, if they wanna come in, will know what it is too. It's right out there. We, we all be upfront about it. You're gonna be a partner. We're gonna come up with a formula that's equitable, that is based on your population size and the number of calls you get. Seems like it should be not that complicated to come up with in a couple hours. And from there, you just say what it is.
Yeah, I, I guess I would, I, I would say that there's a, a process in place that the town has in place for us to follow when it comes to these types of agreements. And we have a town attorney that's gonna look at it. We have our internal resources, our staff that's gonna look at it. Ultimately, it's the, the contract will have to get approved by the Board of Selectmen. So there's a process in the place, and we, and, and we plan on following it.
Okay. Well, all I can say to that is, we've asked some legitimate questions. We haven't gotten any serious answers, nothing on paper to show what it, what it is and how we're gonna recruit the capital costs to the taxpayer. And you want us to take a leap of faith on it. And I don't think it's proper. I think I'd be letting the taxpayers that voted for me down by not having this information in advance. And I don't think I could support that. Uh, e- even though I support doing the ECC with Westport and having other participating towns, I, I like the, the process. But we're the Board of Finance. We have to watch the dollars. We have to make sure things are going properly.
I just, I just wanna, Mr. Chairman, if I could, just for a second, just to address, address one thing, you know, head-on. We're not hiding anything. We're not looking to hide, we're not trying to hide anything. This, as I said, this would have to go. We're, we're not hiding anything. We're not looking to hide, we're not trying to hide anything. This, as I said, this would have to go and get approved by the Board of Selectmen. So it would be out in the public at that time.
Right. So what we, what you don't, I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Smith. What you don't have is what that formula looks like currently, right, right now. And is that fair? You don't know what it is yet.
We don't know. Not exactly, no.
Okay. Was it ever, was, was it ever, um, thought that we would recoup all of our funds that we would expend for this project?
I can't say, I can't say what the, uh, what the, and what the expectation was back when this passed. So I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not sure of the answer to that. I, I don't know if any, anybody else on the line who was here back at that time would know the answer to that.
No, I would, I would think not, but, but I don't know. I'm not sure either. So, um, let me just go around to the other board members. Uh, Mr. Testani, I just hand over and then I'll go to Ms. Charlton. Mr. Testani?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just have a quick follow-up, um, Jared, to, um, one of the lines of questioning from Mr. Walsh. And I'm just trying to get it clear in my head. The town of New Canaan was the, one of the original towns in addition to Westport. My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that only, it's the only fire dispatch for New Canaan, but are they taking on any of the costs for, you know, the, the initial cost like Fairfield and Westport is? I'm just trying to understand what New Canaan's responsibilities are financially and, and if it is in fact, I believe just fire dispatch.
I, I get answer that if, if you, Jared, if you wanna answer-
Go ahead, Captain Bukarati, please.
Hi, Captain Bukarati. Um, New Canaan, uh, is currently contracted with Westport just to do fire dispatch only.
Right. Okay. That's what I thought, Captain. Thank you.
We, we're not answering their 911 calls. They will still answer their own 911 calls. They will call up where Westport Fire would now be situated at Sacred Heart with us. They would call up there, we would dispatch from there. That's really all that they're doing. So they're not contributing to the capital cost because we're not taking over their public safety answering.
Gotcha. Okay. But, and then again, just following up to sort of what Mr. Walsh was alluding to. Will there then, let's say, we move forward with the expenditure, New Canaan becomes one of the participating towns, well, well, do, we don't know yet, correct Jared, what their financial commitment will have to be to be part of the ECC, even though it's only fire dispatch. Am I right with that?
They currently contribute, uh, what, $78,000 and that would, would, would remain the same.
How would, how has that number arrived upon, Captain?
That was negotiated between Westport and New Canaan.
Gotcha.
That's an interlocal between those two towns, which we would assume then that.
Okay, gotcha. Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Testani. Uh, Ms. Charlton?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Um, hi Jared. I, I have, um, just following up on some of Mr. Walsh's questions. I, I think this can be fairly simple and transparent. Um, there's, there's really two pieces of this, right? One is the cost pool of this, uh, of the ECC that has to get allocated. And then the other piece is the formula by which you allocate it. And it seems like we're proposing to keep both of those things offline. And so what I would suggest is, why don't we put the debt service costs in the budget? That way they're part of the co- cost pool. We should put the OPEB and pension costs if they're not already in, in the budget. And that way, you know, we know what the cost pool is. That's not in question. It's, it's being kept in our books and records versus in an offline spreadsheet somewhere. And then the formula is the formula, right? And the formula is based on whatever negotiated percentage or, or however that is calculated based on the cost pool. Um, I, I think that's the way to do it because then in addition to just providing the transparency, it would also allow you to be able to monitor it. You know, we've got, you know, we've got this pool of costs. This is the total. You know, it could even be budgeted as an offset. You know, what's gonna come in from participating towns? And I think for both Fairfield and Westport, um, you know, that would be the right way to do it. Is to just, you know, allocate this, the, the costs in, into that pool. So I would make that suggestion. And I think it would, it would serve to, um, answer, you, you know, it, it would make it easier to answer some of the questions. And going forward, there just wouldn't be any question because, you know, you'd have, you have budget numbers, you'd have an actual comparison to go to. You could kind of monitor and see what was, what the costs were, what billings are coming in from other towns, assuming other towns participate, et cetera. So I would, I would suggest that, um, that that's, that that's the way we do it.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you know, we, we considered that, but we, you know, we looked at the fact that this passed already about a year and a half ago, uh, with the, you know, the paradigm. And so we, we kept that in place. That seemed to be what, uh, because it was approved, seemed to be what the bodies wanted. Uh, it seemed to be the, the model that the bodies wanted. So we left that, that model in place, even though, even at that time, there was no, uh, no guarantee or promise of, uh, what the formula was gonna be. And there was no disclosure of any formula. And so all the, all the bodies, uh, voted for that. And so we're kinda, we're following that same type of, that same kind of path here.
Yeah, I mean, I, I realize also that next year's, you know, budget is, we've already got the book out, but you know, again, I just, the reason I say this is, um, back to some of the other comments, not only for transparency, I think ultimately it'll be easier to account for. We don't have to be tracking these things behind the scenes. And, um, you know, it will provide a mechanism just to kind of monitor the budget and actuals and, and sort of, you know, it's a unique thing, right? It's a, it's a separate partnership. It's not like, um, you know, the debt service, I feel like is a little bit different for this. And if we are in fact going to include that in the pool of expenses that we charge other towns for, I really think it should be accounted for in, in the budget so that, you know, that's clear and that we're not, you know, sort of doing this offline and in different calculations for, for different towns. So I would, you know, maybe just rethink about that and consider it. And, and I understand if it's, if it's awkward to change it for this budget year, but I really think, um, you know, we, we'd be better served and we'd have less risk of, you know, errors or, or oversights or anything else if, if we, um, you know, had it in our books and records. So I'll just leave it at that. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Charlton. Mr. Bateson?
Yeah, thanks Jim. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right. Uh, yeah, I second what, uh, Lori just said. I, part of my concern is, is, uh, accessibility to the costs. And I think what, what she just laid out is a very approachable way to do it. I, I, I understand we might not be able to do it for this budget year, but going forward, I think we need to. When it comes to the formula for recovering our costs, I understand Mr. Walsh's concern. And, you know, I wanna proceed on a leap of faith, but at the same time, when I just heard, you know, Captain Bukarati speaking, you know, I heard a reference to an interlocal agreement. And that, you know, I, I don't wanna get into the tall grass on this stuff, but you know, here it, you know, popped into my head. Does that mean an interlocal agreement would supersede, you know, a ratifying formula? You know, ratifying towns' formula that we would calculate. So I, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around this and, and move forward with this, but then when I hear stuff like that, it's just like, okay. So I don't really know what the formula is. And there might be extenuating circumstances out there that might change the formula to the negative of the taxpayers of Fairfield. So I understand where we're trying to go here, guys, but you know, when this conversation evolves, these things come out and it, 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 it causes me concern that I would like to see the formula before I sign on for the debt. So, you know, here I am, back to square one. I, I don't know where I am right now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bateson. Anyone else on the board like to comment? Mr. Dewitt?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, Chris Dewitt. Uh, I just wanna bring up the, you know, the last time we talked about this, which I think was, was last month. I asked the question of, I believe it was the captain, you know, how many towns do we need to get on board to, to get in the black here for the operating expenses? And I believe the answer was one. Is that correct, Captain?
I, I don't, what do you mean by in the black?
So that, so that we're, um, are, uh, we have people paying in work. We've got more income coming in than, um, expenses uh, uh, on the ECC.
I'm not, I'm not entirely sure of that, but, uh, I, I, all, I can tell you that if we get another town, the state subsidy per year will go up. We become what's called a regional center and we will get more money from the state.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman? Just, Captain, do you finish?
Yeah, yes, sir. Sorry.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt?
Sure. Uh, just to clarify, thi- this is, I, 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 I can envision a situation where this is gonna be a profitable venture. What it does do for us is it, uh, puts us in a situation where we're spending less, where the net impact on our budget, I'll just say it that way. The net impact on our budget is less than what it is under the current paradigm for ECC. So, so if, if you're looking at it in that way, then I would, I would say, you know, and looking at the, the numbers that are in your backup there, we are, we would be in FY '22 slightly below the net impact of what the, uh, current situation is. And so, and then so by bringing another town on, i- is gonna make us that much better.
Yeah. And, and thank you for that, Mr. Smith, because, because that, that's exactly what I asked last time, right? It wasn't, I, I didn't think we were making a boatload of money. This is gonna become a revenue, uh, you know, generator. But yeah, that, that's exactly what I meant. So thank you for that explanation. The only reason I bring that up is because that's all we can really address right now. Um, I remember when this came up two-ish years ago as, as an opportunity. I don't ever remember that we were thinking that we would recoup the sunk cost in the initial investment. So, um, the fact that we're not a hundred percent, we, we don't know exactly what the formula is right now. Doesn't bother me too much. I, I, I think we'll, I think we'll get there. Um, but the fact that even on our own, it'll cost us less than, you know, than what we're paying today. Bringing in one or two more towns is just gonna be a benefit to the town. You know, I, I, I'm, I'm certainly gonna support this.
Thank you, Mr. Dewitt. So your point is regardless of the formula, whatever, whoever we bring on, is to our benefit?
It, it, it is. And, and you know, there's been, so as far as I can tell, there's two issues that were brought up. One was, are we gonna re, are we gonna recoup the, the sunk cost? Which again, I don't ever think that that was a, was, was ever gonna happen, right? And two, you know, are, are we a hundred percent clear on what the formula is for re, you know, for generating revenue, I'll call it, now, or, or mitigating, uh, mitigating losses may, a better way to put it. Um, again, I'm, I'm, I, I'm convinced that we'll figure that formula out. And the fact that we know about it tonight or don't know about it tonight, i- isn't a, isn't a big detractor for me.
Thank you, Mr. Dewitt. Um, this, let me go to Mr. Bateson and Ms. Charlton, I see. Mr. Bateson?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Can hear you.
Yeah. Chris, good point. And brings me back to, I think we can all get caught in the high grass and, you know, try and hammer this thing out. And I, I, I get it, but big picture, I do think we're gonna be delivering a service to the residents at a cheaper cost. And I think I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna go with that philosophy and go with this tonight. I, I know I would like to nickel and dime the revenue and make sure we don't get shorted, but at the end of the day, I do think we're gonna deliver this service to the residents of Fairfield on a, on a, on a cheaper basis. Good, good call, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bateson, um, Ms. Charlton. And then Mr. Testani. Jack, I'll come to you right after, Ms. Charlton. Ms. Charlton?
Thank you. Yes, uh, Mr. Brown, thank you. Just a quick comment and then a question. I mean, first, I, I think we're never gonna recoup, um, our capital because if anything, we will have additional towns come in to share a portion of, of the capital that we outlay. We're never gonna, you know, to Jared's point, make a profit on this, you know? The more towns that come in, the more that we can share that expense. But I certainly would not, you know, there's, there's no profit concept here. Um, as I understand it, but I, I do just wanna follow up on, Jared, I, I wanna paraphrase what you said. I think what you said is that regardless, even if no additional towns come in ever, we will have a modest cost savings with this proposal. Did you mean modest cost savings or modest additional expense? Can you just clarify?
Sure. I'm, what I meant was a modest, I, I'll say a modest net impact on our budget because there is, there's a revenue and a spending component to this. And so-
Positive or negative? That's all?
Posi- it, positive for the town.
Right.
It would be, it would be, it would be better for the, be better for the towns, very slightly.
Right. And that's why, again, good, good reminder for everybody that, you know, this, from a, from a voting perspective on this item, you know, this is, I, I feel, my opinion, we, we gotta do this, you know, it's, it's, um, I think it's important, I would reiterate, I think it's important to track the expenses, I think, because of the nature of this thing, it's even more important to make sure, you know, that we understand what the cost pool is and to account for that. But, um, you know, I, I think, um, those are, those are issues that should be hammered out. And to me, that's figuring that out is, is not, um, uh, you know, my vote wouldn't be contingent on figuring it that out, but I, I do think it's important to do that and, and to have it transparent and to monitor it. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Charlton. Thanks. Mr. Testani?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a quick question on, um, something that, I think Jared or perhaps it was the captain alluded to. The, the only other agreement currently in place besides the one between Fairfield and Westport is with the New Canaan fire dispatch that we talked about earlier. Is that right? That's, when you said interlocal agreement, is that what you referred to, Captain?
Yes, uh, currently for their contracted services, New Canaan and Westport have an agreement between them.
Right, I understand. But you mentioned a separate, I think you used the phrase interlocal agreement.
That, that's what they currently have right now. That's what I, an interlocal agreement.
Okay, gotcha. And I, the only other question I had on the ECC and I wanna sort of also follow up on what Ms. Charlton said. My familiarity with ECCs is that, you know, taking the cost piece of it, obviously that's our purview on the Board of Finance. But I think for our residents, it also provides a sense of security, a sense of, um, you know, perhaps some efficiencies in how the dispatches run. And I think that's something that we can all rest assured as finance members, if we move, moving forward in passing this item, I certainly will, and I'm voting for it, is that you know, we can keep the controls in place on the finance piece and at the same time have some reassurances that it'll, it'll be a, a safety, extra safety mechanism for our residents. Having said that, I did ask the chief this and I, I see he's on, how are you tonight, chief? Can, can you hear me, Chief Callenars?
Yes, I can. Doing well. Thank you, sir.
Just have a question. Um, I did have a little bit of a concern of, and I mentioned this at our last meeting, and maybe you can just kind of reassure me or, or reconfirm how the telecommunication, do I have that right? Um, people are, and forgive me if I'm not getting the title correct, of the people who are gonna be the personnel in the ECC, who will they report into at the ECC? And will it be, I'm guessing a police lieutenant, a fire lieutenant, a police captain? Is there someone that will have a police oversight at the ECC? And is that yet to be determined?
No, it, it is, uh, it is already determined. It is determined through the interlocal agreement that a Fairfield police captain will be the supervisor or the administrator for the emergency communication center.
And will that be a 24- And will that be a 24/7 role, chief? Hopefully not Captain Bukarati doing all 24/7.
That, that will be a 24/7 responsibility. Of course, similar to our emergency communication center now, we have other supervisors in place, you know, during the midnight shift, the shift commander would have ultimate responsibility, who would then report to, uh, a police captain, whoever that might be at the time, uh, who oversees that responsibility.
A- and the personnel themselves, who will be responsible for the dispatch calls, it's my understanding, and again, you may have informed me of this, so I apologize ahead of time if I am repeating myself, I'm just getting it clear in my head, they will go through a background check in a similar way to what police officers go through, am I correct with that? Maybe one step down, or how is the background check being, going to be conducted?
It, it is a very similar background check as, as a police officer would go through.
Like fingerprints, felony, prior felony convictions, those kinds of things?
That's correct.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Captain, I thought you wouldn't mind if I didn't volunteer you for all 24/7.
All right. No, no problem here.
Okay, thank you. Um, any ques- further questions on the capital budget?
Um, the capital expenditures for this?
Jim Walsh, I keep trying to raise my hand, but I don't know if you don't see it, or...
Nah, Jim, you know what, you, you don't have a picture there.
I know, I keep using the whole raise my hand man.
Uh, I don't think I see that either.
Oh, anyway, um, just a couple of things on some things that people said, um, um, in regards to what Mr. Testani said, are we getting a better system? Are, are we lacking in our ECC system right now? Is there like holes in it or something? I just want to make sure that the, the town feels safe in regards to the ECC calls, is this, are we getting a better system? More efficient, I, I don't understand. I guess that's to Captain, you know, either Captain Bukarati or Chief Calamars.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Uh, um, you know what, I'll let, I'll let John, since he's, he's low, he's queued up on it, he spent a lot of years in the ECC, so I'll let him speak on that.
Our current ECC right now, it, it's, the, the equipment down there is old, um, we are located in the basement of the police department, and some time ago, we were told that we had to get out of there due to insurance purposes and being in the floodplain. Um, it, it's, you know, i- it's aging, the, the workstations are old, the radio system's old, that, that's a separate project in and of itself, but, um, we, we have to do something with it anyway, we have to do something. So, um, you know, a- and when you say it's, it is, a lot of the stuff is end of life there, but we, we are, you know, it's a 24/7 operation, everything still works, we maintain our equipment, we maintain it as best as we can, but it is time to, to, to upgrade, to move and to upgrade, and this, this was the best way forward at the time.
Understood, thank you, uh, I just want to make sure, so we're, all that one calls are being answered, being responded to? You know, police and fire, and the EMTs are going out, we're not missing anything, right? Because I just, there seem to be like a little question that we're, we're needing to improve it, maybe for quality purposes. I understand the equipment might be old, I understand that one of the goals was to get it out of the basement because of potentially flood, it's in a flood zone, uh, but I just want to make sure that the current system is, is working as designed.
Current system is functioning, we're on top of that.
Excellent. Um, Mr. Schmidt, do you guarantee that we will not be paying more than we're paying right now?
I know that based on, like any other budget, I know that based on the, the numbers that we have right now, that the FY22 budget is slightly less than what the FY20 budget was, which is, which is what, and when I, and when I say budget, I mean the, the, again, the net impact on the town.
So I heard you say that before, but do you guarantee that it's not going to cost us more for, to go with this? You, we're being sold that this is a better system and that it's cheaper.
So, th- this is a budget like anything else, this, you know, we're, we're making some projections, so we are counting on some other towns to, to come in that, and we think it's a, a good, uh, you know, the prospects of bringing another town in, uh, are good, and with every town that comes in, it's going to bring in additional revenue that's going to, uh, you know, put us in a better position.
All right, so you can't guarantee it, so there's a possibility it costs more, we just don't know, we're basing on a budget that right now, we, it's just budgetary numbers on where we're going, but it could cost us more. I just want to be prepared.
So, Mr. Schmidt, let me, what, I think what I hear you saying is it's lined up for savings for Fairfield, right, currently? You're looking to get more participants, will put us in a better position, that's where we're lined up. You're a little cautious on using the word guarantee.
I'm always cautious about using words like that.
It's a, it's a strong word, guarantee's a strong word, but...
Comes to budgeting.
It's projected that it's in the favor of the town of Fairfield, right? You don't see any reason right now why it wouldn't remain so.
Think that's accurate.
Okay. So we'll just have to see, I mean, budgets, you know, especially first-year budgets on stuff, can, as, you know, Mr. Schmidt, you've been in budgeting, you've been with the state in budgeting.
Long time.
Things go crazy. Things flip every year, you have surpluses, you could have huge deficits. So, a budget's just kind of what it is, just we'll put our best thing on paper and we'll see what happens. So, I guess we're going to have to, you know, if this goes forward, we're going to have to look at this after the first year and see how it's all going. Um, I, I reserve my previous, um, comments in regards to, I don't know why, as we're sitting here, we've been talking about this for a year, no formulas come up, been, been created yet for capital. I mean, this project was supposed to be opened already, and we still don't know how we're going to get reimbursement on capital expenses or the bonding that Westport Fairfield is going to be doing, as we sit here today, despite the fact that the project's been delayed. Um, and while I do admit, Mr. Schmidt, you said that we had, we had come to an agreement a year earlier, we'd also come to one a year earlier with a cost factor that was $1 million less. So yes, when it comes to the finances of it, it is more expensive and we're looking at it a little closer. And I might be the only one who has a problem with the fact that we don't know, I, I don't even know what this agreement is anymore, because I, the whole, how we're getting the capital cost back is still not being laid out, but that's what it is. I will say that I support what Ms. Charlton, which is kind of what I was asking, my first question to you, Mr. Schmidt, was are we going to be taking the bonding payments by Fairfield and Westport and rolling them into the budget? You said, no, we didn't plan on doing that. I think, just like Ms. Charlton thinks, I think that'd be a, a great idea, be very transparent, everybody know what these numbers are. I don't know why that wouldn't be done, but you guys are going to do it whichever way you want to do it, and that you can get passed through the Board of Selectment. So really, the, this whole thing is going to be really on the Board of Selectment.
Yeah. Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Schmidt, do you have, do you have a reply?
Uh, I'm sorry, my computer's about to die, I'm just plugging it in.
You should know better, you get on these, these meetings, you need a...
I had it close by, I had it, I had my, I had my cord close by, I just had to plug in it.
So Mr. Walsh's comment was that he agrees with Ms. Charlton in regards to the pension and, and OPEN, and to take a look at it in that way, so do you have?
I'm open, you know, a- as Ms. Charlton also pointed out, that we, uh, you know, we have a budget proposal now, uh, that's out there, but I would be open to, um, looking at that, if you want to include the allocation of those costs that are currently not within the ECC budget, I would be open to a discussion about that for the, the next, uh, budget go-around.
I think we'll follow up then, at the right time with that. Mr. Walsh, yeah, I, I don't see anything from chat from you, so you're just going to have to find a way to let me know, but do you have any, do you have any follow-up? And then Mr. Leclerc has a question as well. You there, Jim? Okay, I'll come back to you, because I don't hear you right now. Ms. Leclerc?
Oh, I just wanted to weigh in my opinion, and that is, I agree with both Lori and Jim, that I would love to see everything in the budget book in one, one page, um, that shows the, the debt allocation, um, and so if that would be possible the next time, I would like to see it that way, to show the true cost of the cost center. Um, and then the second thing is that my memory of this whole project was that we were doing this to reduce our costs into the future, um, and so I, you know, I guess I don't want, um, hoping that we don't end up paying more for taking this project on, um, you know, I, I guess that was the, that I thought by combining different, um, ECCs together, that there was going to be some sort of cost saving. Um, so I would like to see that, and I guess that's a little bit of a concern to me, that, that it might not ha- happen. And, um, in, in the past, like, we've asked these same questions every year, and the formula's never been determined yet, so I don't think that's new, or that, that's what we want, like, that we didn't want to see it, I think it was just the answer we received. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Ms. Leclerc. All right, so Mr. Schmidt, that's three, four to finance members that are asking for the same thing in regards to pension and OPEN, so we'll, I'm sure you'll take a look at it. And there's probably others that aren't, that aren't saying anything, but I see nodding heads. I see Ms. Marmee nodding her head, Mr. Matola, Mr. Basin. So, we'll follow up with that, okay?
Yes.
Uh, Mr.? I just want to make sure, Mr. Walsh, she's checked in here, Jim, you with us?
Yeah, I'm back.
Okay. Okay, um, don't know if you heard Ms. Leclerc's comments, but she agreed with you with the pension and, and the OPEN, and debt service actually being split. So do you have any further comments or questions, Mr. Walsh?
Uh, I'm just going to say, I, while, while I fully support this joint ECC, I think there's too many questions that are still outstanding for me to vote in favor of this, so I'm just, I'm not going to vote against it because I support the thing, but I, I'm not, I'm going to abstain from my vote, I just want everybody to know the reasons why I'm abstaining. There's way too many questions on this entire program that is never going to come back to us.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
No, thanks.
Thank you. Any questions, further questions from the Board of Finance? If not, I'm going to read from the bonding resolution and we'll vote. Mr. Matola, looked like you were about to say anything, I don't want to cut you off if you have a comment, you're good? Okay. From the bonding resolution, a resolution amending and restating the resolution entitled "A Resolution Appropriating $2,897,276.45 for the Costs Associated with Establishment and Operation of a Fairfield-Westport Multitown Emergency Communication Center with Town of Westport, and Authorizing the Issuance of Bonds to Finance Such Appropriation to Increase the Amount of the Appropriation by $1,116,940, to a total of $4,014,216." All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so I'm going to read off, uh, ayes, Mr. Brown, Mr. Testani, Ms. Leclerc, Ms. Charlton, Ms. Marmee, Mr. DeWitt, Mr. Basin, and Mr. Matola. That's eight ayes, nays, any opposed? See, none opposed, abstentions?
I abstain, Mr. Walsh abstains.
Mr. Walsh abstains. Okay, this vote carries 8, 0, 1. Thank you, moving on to... Item number eight.
Mr. Brown, when the Board of Selectmen approves this, I presume if they approve it, can Mr. Schmidt get us the final agreement, so we can review it, so that we can talk about this at further quarterly's when they come up?
Yes, I don't see, I don't see any reason why not, Mr. Schmidt? Mr. Schmidt agrees.
Yes.
Okay, and can we also be advised of when other towns get added to this, so that we would know, as opposed to finding out later?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Now, every time a new town's added, we'd like to know, I'd like, I would like to know what town it was, what's their contribution going to be, how much did the state contribution go up? And what does that do to the town of Fairfield's contribution?
Yes, and, and, you know, and to go a step further, you, you guys will, you'll know that, uh, each budget year, for, a- at the very least, you're going to know that in the budget, that, uh, you know, you'll, you'll be able to see that information.
Yeah, I'd like to know it when it occurs, so when like, you know, say Wilton joins, or, or Monroe, or, you know, maybe Bridgeport, you know, we'd like to know.
Sure.
As it happens, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Schmidt, uh, thank you as well. Uh, going to item number eight, non-recurring capital, 20 years, to hear, consider, and adopt a bond resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectmen entitled "A Resolution Appropriating $4,509,000 for the Cost of Certain Non-Recurring Capital Projects and Authorizing the Issuance of Bonds to Finance Such Appropriation." So, we go to, may I have a motion to put this before us? Mr. Matola, seconded by Ms. Marmee, uh, thank you, if we go to the bond resolution itself, we have an Exhibit A. So we'll go to the back, and it actually says, uh, Exhibit 1, but it's Exhibit A, and there are four, 15 items, 14 for the town, one for the Board of Education. And so we have gone through, um, these projects. So we are going to vote tonight as a bond resolution, and what we will do, if there's any changes to the exhibit, as say, Attorney Strass, and we will just eliminate if, if need be, um, one project or, or the projects, if voted to do so from Exhibit 1, it'll change Exhibit 1, correct? And then we'll vote on Exhibit 1. Okay, I'm getting a nodded yes, and that's the way to proceed.
That, that is correct, if you reduced, if you took any of the projects off of the exhibit, we ob- obviously would reduce the amount of the resolution also.
So we will have two changes, the exhibit and the amount of the bond resolution itself.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And so, let's do this. Let me start with item number 15, district-wide retro commissioning rebounds of the school mechanical systems for $625,000, which is for the Board of Ed. Uh, any questions for the Board of Ed on this project? Okay, I am seeing Mr. Walsh, because I can't, oh, I can see you now, do you have any questions? Any question from the Board on this project? I am seeing none. And so, I would say to the Board of Ed that you're safe with this project, okay? So you don't have to wait to the end. Mr. Papa George, if you want to leave me your cell phone number, just in case, but I, I could pretty much assure you we're okay. All right, Mr. Tallick, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night again.
Good night again.
Have a good night.
Thank you, you too. All right, so now we'll go back up to the town projects, of which there are 14, and I think the best way to do this is to kind of go down and see if there's any further questions, if that's okay. All right, so we have, let's start with item number, project number one. Again, we've gone through this, but of course, it's appropriate to have follow-up questions to ensure that we're comfortable with the vote. Independence Hall Office renovations for $500,000. Uh, Mr. Rossello is here tonight, are there any questions for DPW for this particular project? Uh, Mr. DeWitt?
Just more of a statement for the, for, uh, the public, last time there was a question about, uh, being, this is in a floodplain, blah, blah, blah. Uh, we did get, uh, we did get a backup today saying that, um, we could do up to, I think it was $2.7 million worth of renovation and still be covered, so, um, if, if, if the, if anyone's tracking from the last meeting, this is acceptable amount of work to do in this building.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Mr. Walsh?
Does the $2.7 million only cover one of the buildings, or all of the buildings that we have in town? I mean, what's that percentage based on? Is it based on the Town Hall campus? That limitation?
Okay, hold on. Let me see who answered that question. Mr. Schmidt, did that come?
The answer came from Jim Went, who don't see on...
Mr. Marsillo?
Yes, I could answer that. The answer refers to a FEMA regulation that talks about the level of investment or modifications you can make to a building that is in a floodplain. And you're permitted to build up to 50% of the value of the building without violating the FEMA regulations.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that standard. So I guess it's the Town Hall properties, which I think would entail both Old Town Hall and Sullivan Independence Hall.
No, this, this is specific to the Sullivan Independence Hall.
Okay. I'll talk to Jim Went about it tomorrow, because it's all the same property. They're not like individual properties. So it's normally, and I've had to do this for clients myself, it's normally the property, whatever buildings are on the property, the land. It's based on the value of the land. And the only thing to keep in mind is that if we spend $500,000 here, for the next five years, we'll only be able to do $2.2 million on the entire piece of property. And I know there's, you know, speaking with Mr. Marsilio, there's talk about one possibility is to look to expand Sullivan Independence Hall, more of the town to be in there, and that's gonna limit, yeah.
So if you permit, I'm sorry, Mr. Walsh. Okay. I just want to read directly from Mr. Went's answer to that question. The tax assessor's information indicates that the depreciated value of Independence Hall is 5.4 million. So that's his sentence, and...
The FEMA regulation doesn't have to do with the value of the building itself. It only has to do with the, how much can be done based on the value of the land itself.
Okay.
Only the land. They don't look at the building. Anyway, I can talk to Mr., I can talk to Mr. Went about it. I don't want to...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any further questions on Independence Hall renovations? Seeing none, so I'm gonna move forward to project number two, townwide facility audit plan for $400,000. Questions on this project? Okay, I'm seeing none. I'm gonna go to number three, Police Department, the HVAC unit, $500,000. Questions on this project? Mr. Bateson?
Yeah, Jim, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Yeah. I remember, I recall several years ago that we did something to HVAC at the Police Department. Is there anybody here that can speak to that work, and whether that's continuing work, or that's, can, you know what I mean? Was that work completed? Not satisfactory? It didn't work? Is this a whole new project in relation to that?
My error, if I could speak to that, is that I don't have the 14-point responses before me. I have them in my office. I just did not bring them home. But that, this is a, a more extensive project than, I believe, the original one that referring to Ed. So I, I'm kind of familiar with the, the scope of the project, in that it's so substantial that there are actual structural elements that have to be examined and replaced. So that is the best I can say to you at this point.
So I have that in front of me, the 14-point summary. Where, where, not a problem, where would the answer to Mr. Bateson's question be in the 14-point summary? Is it in here somewhere?
So the answer would be in a previous project, in a previous budget somewhere, which I'm, I, I wouldn't have, I'm not familiar with.
Okay. Not a problem. I am. What, the only thing, I'm reading about the background. I don't think they discuss any work done on the previous unit. It just says that this past summer was very taxed, was a very taxing season on the HVAC system for this very busy building.
I'm familiar with the complaints.
They're both 12 years old. Because they run 24/70, Mr. Twister, but that's, that's what it covers. Ms. Marmee?
Yeah, I'm just referring to the background as well, that this is an update that they requested. And, Mr. Bateson, it's my recollection that the Police Department had asked for an upgrade in the past, but I, it's my recollection that we did not approve it. So I don't know if, maybe our recollections differ, and maybe that's where the, the difference is, that they're putting this forth in front of us again, because we hadn't originally approved it, going back a couple of years.
Okay.
That could be accurate, too.
All right. Thank you, Sheila. Any further questions on this particular project? I am seeing none. I'm gonna move on to item, project number four, the Flood Control Study. Jennings Beach to Rickards Dune for $100,000. Mr. Hurley is here to answer any questions. Mr. Hurley, yes, there you are. Thank you for being here. Mr. Bateson?
Yeah, Jim, thanks. I did have a conversation with Town Attorney Baldwin. My, my, my concern on this was originally, I see this as a two-face, two-face project. This involves, you know, the Fairfield Beach Club and two, you know, a couple of private properties in between Jennings and, and Penfield. And my concern was, is if this, you know, how bound are we to this flood control study? What if the property owners, the private property owners don't like it, or it's so burdensome on them, or that, you know, it, it's just impossible to do, or, or so forth. So I was concerned about spending the money on this, not knowing what we were gonna get in, in return, or whether it was even feasible to do. When I talked to Baldwin about it, I, I, I kind of came to the conclusion that the $100,000 spent to see what can be done to mitigate flooding there. So I, I, I kind of reconciled my, my fear of, you know, if I lived down there, I wouldn't want the town telling me what to do with my property, because, you know, flood management. But if it is something reasonable that does improve the, you know, the, the property owners, and mitigates flood down there, I see it. So I am willing to go for the $100,000, and see what it turns up, and if it is something that is feasible to solve, to solve the problem down there. I do want to acknowledge, though, that I think going forward, that the second phase of this project could be problematic if it is, you know, too burdensome on the private homeowners down there, and the Fairfield Beach Club. So I am willing to go for the $100,000, but I do think, you know, it, it all depends upon what this study turns up. That's where I am on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bateson. And, Mr. Hurley, I just want to give you an opportunity, if you want to just have, have a follow-up on that. And if you don't, it's fine, too.
Okay. The only thing I could say is, the only thing I can say is that whenever we do these designs, there'll be plenty of opportunities for the public to speak. There usually will be one or two public informational meetings that, again, the public could speak at. And I did send an email out to people in anticipation of any questions. And so hopefully, the email has, will answer any concerns that, that people might have, and, and then go from there. But, yeah, we usually do work, we'll have to work with the neighbors, if there's gonna be impacts with them. The study will also include maybe doing the minimal amount, where at least we get some benefit, and then it may run all the way to the maximum amount, where we get the maximum benefit. And as Mr. Bateson said, looking at it, getting a design, and then finding out the impacts, then, then the town, you know, can, and the public can decide whether to go forward with the project. So thank you for the opportunity.
I thank you, Mr. Hurley. See, no further questions on this project. We'll go to project number five, the Townwide Guideline and Fencing for $200,000. Any question on this item? See, none. Project number six, the Black Rock Turnpike Design for $250,000. Moving on to Road Safety Improvements, $250,000. Okay, Congress Street Bridge Design, additional for the new bridge, $150,000. Covert Repair Reef Road for $100,000. Okay. Moving, moving on for the Pumper. The Pumper, LSN 11, for $725,000. Chief, thank you for being here, too. For the Fire Station Rehabilitation for $250,000. Mr. Bateson?
Yeah, Jim, thanks. I got the, I saw a, a follow-up from Chief McCarthy. I like, this is year two of this program, I believe. I, I like, several, a decade ago, when, yeah, Jerry came to us about the golf course. I like the way the golf course, every, you know, that 10-year program they had. Every year, Jerry would lay out what they did with the money we gave him last year, what they planned to do with the $100,000. I mean, that, that was the million-dollar program over 10 years. Chief, if you could do, I, I appreciate what you did. You didn't have time to do what you did because of COVID, and people in the facilities. That I understand. And I do see that you do plan on starting up this work in, you know, June. I would like to see, you know, next year, when you come to us for, you know, Phase Three of this, give us what was done, Year One, what we gave you, what you planned on doing, what you got done, what you plan on doing this year, you know, basically just a rolling forward of the project, so that we know, you know, from inception to completion, in your total scheme of things, where we are. Because it just, as a board, it helps us to track where we are, and make sure that we're not missing anything, you're not missing anything, or nothing pops up, or, you know, the scope, you know, scope creep, and all that stuff we sometimes deal with on these projects. But I do appreciate the fact that you put that together, and, you know, I am willing to go forward with the 250 tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bateson. Chief, I think you're on mute, if you were...
Yes, I'll be very glad to give you our regular updates, no less than annually, on the progress that we make, and look forward and report on developments.
Thank you, Chief. Any further questions on this item? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to item, project number 12, the Pine Creek Park Playground for $103,000. Mr. Calabrese is here. Appreciate you being here, Anthony. I see Mr. Bateson has a question. Mr. Bateson?
Yeah, I just want to follow up, Jim. I talked to, I had gotten some correspondence from Anthony. This, this concerned me, because I didn't know that we were gonna be bonding playgrounds. And, you know, I, I know that we have, I, I don't know, Anthony probably knows. It's gotta be, they're, they're all over the place.
I'm curious on that, too, Anthony. How many do we... 29. 29, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Bateson, go ahead.
So then I was, you know, I, I failed to, you know, go back to the capital planning workshop, that he actually does have that in there, and that's the method we're gonna do this. And so I'll go, I'll defer to the fact that if this is already in the capital plan, it's established that this is the way we're gonna approach this. I agree with that present, I, I, I agree with that, and, and willing to proceed with this. So thank you for the opportunity. Thanks for answering my concerns, Anthony.
Welcome.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bateson. Any further questions on this item, this project? I see none. Item number 13, the Lake Mahogany Splash Pad Replacement for $150,000. Any follow-up questions for Mr. Calabrese on this item? Seeing none. Item number 14, the, the softball field lights for $206,000 for the girls' softball field. Now, we do, tonight, have a public comment on this. Casey Elliott, are you with us?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Welcome, Mr. Elliott. Thank you for being here.
All right. Casey Elliott, 797 Old Stratfield Road. I am the Vice President of Fairfield Little League Girl Softball, and have been on the Board for, Board of Directors for about 12 years now. I know at the, at the capital planning meeting, you know, some questions came up about our sustainability, and will be around, will we be around in 15 years to pay this off, and all that. And I just wanted to give some information. We are the largest Little League Girl Softball program in the state. We are actually also one of the very few that are independent from Little League Baseball. For example, you know, Westport, Trumbull, Black Rock, they're, they all fall under their baseball umbrella. And we've been around an independent league for about 15 years. Ever since Doogie Yellow went up, we have spent close to $100,000 on outfitting the kitchen, putting up a bullpen, batting cage, the press box. And all of that is, frankly, donations to the town, because it's on town property, and it's now, it's now a part of Fairfield. Our budget yearly is about $10,000 to $15,000 for improvements at Doogie Yellow. And we are pretty much done with what we want to do up there, other than the lights, which, by my rough math, will cost us about $14,000 a year, over the 20 years. So, you know, it's well within our means. And we're really just asking you to let us donate a $200,000 project to the town, and just, you know, helping us, obviously, stretch out the payments. But it's going to be, you know, improving the field, and, you know, from a fiscal point of view, it's a, it's our $200,000 gift. So I hope we receive your support on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Appreciate you being here tonight. Just please stay with us, as there might be some questions. Mr. Matola?
Yes. So I, I thought when we talked about this, like, two weeks ago, we were gonna get a draft legal agreement of some sort between the Doogie, between the, the league and the town. And I didn't see that in any of the documentation. So can someone shed some light on that? I'd like to support this, but I want to see what the details are of any agreement that's obligating the league to, to make these payments.
Yeah.
And what's our security, stuff like that? That's the other question.
I'm sorry, Mr. Matola, what was the second question?
I was just gonna say, what's our security? I mean, we, 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 we own the, I want to, I am in favor of this. I want to support it. I'm just, I want to protect the town's interest here. And I don't know what our security is, because the town owns the field. And I want to know what the legal agreement is. Has, has Attorney Baldwin looked at this? Can someone shed some light on that?
Yeah, Mr. Matola, thank you for bringing those two points up, because those were two questions that we had asked at our, I think it was at a quarterly meeting. all right, I think it was at a quarterly meeting when we reviewed the Center Capital Workshop meeting. But Mr. Calabrese, can you, can you, uh, give us an update on those two items?
Sure, yes, I can. Um, and I apologize if it wasn't included in any of the packets, but, uh, uh, the email I have from Attorney Baldwin, uh, essentially says that he doesn't have any issues with the way that this agreement is shaping up. He believes the easiest way to handle this is to coordinate with the town CFO to come up with the annual carrying costs of the bond and simply invoice Fairfield Little League Girls Softball annually like we do for all the rest of, uh, the leagues.
Okay, but what we were looking for was a legal opinion and, and we don't even have that email. And so it, it doesn't do us any good. I mean, verbally, I'm sorry, right? You're reading, you're reading an email from Attorney Baldwin, but we were looking for something, a document, um, from, from the town attorney. And also what are the, you know, what are the conditions? What, how is this agreement going to work? Uh, you know, Mr. Elliott, we, we respect your time on, on the, the league and on the board, but what, how, how does this, you know, how do we, how does this agreement look to ensure that the town does capture the agreed-upon funds year over year? That, that is something we would like to see, it needs to be drawn up.
Um, I have, obviously have no problem with any agreement that you want to draw up. I, I was in on the communication that Anthony had, uh, via email with, um, I think the attorney and CFO, um, I, you know, we wouldn't assign anything. And, and I, and I would say, I would, I would say that your security is the, I mean, it's, it's the lights and, right? If you go buy a car and you don't make your payments, they come take the car. If you, uh,
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Non-legal opinion.
Right. Listen, and, and I'm sorry, that question wasn't so much meant to you because we didn't ask you the question, it was meant for Mr. Smith. And, but I appreciate, I appreciate your response, but once those lights are up, you know, the lights are up, we're not going to go take the lights down. So, uh, Mr. Smith, we, you know, we need to see this agreement. We'd like to see the legal opinion, we just want to protect the town and we want to make sure that we don't have any issues with the neighbors. I, I believe before the majority of this board would be comfortable with this. Uh, Mr. Walsh, you're, you're kind of raising your hand, so I want to go over to you, please.
One of the other things that we were supposed to, we requested that we get, I'm like kind of shocked that Mr. Baldwin was not on this call. We'd asked a lot from Attorney Baldwin from the last meeting. One of the, which we haven't discussed yet, which was what could the town's potential legal liability be? If we go to try to put this up, number one, we're going to have to defend it at ZBA. There's a requirement that this is going to have to go before the zoning board of the field. I believe you're going to have to show a hardship. Hardships are nearly impossible to prove in very limited circumstances if somebody hires their attorney. They are, these neighbors, I would imagine where they all live and why they choose to live there in that neighborhood, they clearly want privacy. It's what drives people to live up there. And for somebody to say there's going to be lights, I mean, Mr. Calabrese and I have spoken to about it. I'm like, I know there's other negotiations that go on. I don't understand why the league doesn't negotiate with the neighbors first before we're going to spend money or a bond. And we may have $250,000, maybe more of legal expenses going through the court systems all the way potentially up to the Supreme Court. So I thought we were kind of putting the cart, and I, and I support this and this project, but, you know, I understand the, the neighbors have rights too. The neighbors didn't want the field there, I supported there being a field there. It went in. But I don't understand why the league and the, and our recreation department doesn't have a sit-down with the neighborhood and try and negotiate. Anthony, we've done this before, right?
Neighborhood meetings, absolutely.
And in negotiations regards to lighting and things like that.
Yeah, high school's a good example, Fairfield Ward.
And Fairfield U has to do this all the time with their neighbors around them.
Sacred Heart as well.
Yep, and Sacred Heart does it as well.
This is one step in the process, Jim.
Yep, and I think that the process should be determined first. Because who's going to be paying all those legal expenses? Us? Town? I don't hear, I mean, maybe the league's going to make a commitment that they'll pay all those legal expenses. It just seems like, and then my second area is what kind of precedent does this set? To, because I know there's people from looking at this, from the boys' little league, like is the, is the administration going to commit to, if boys' baseball wants to put lights up at Bull Manor Park where they invested, I don't know, 100,000, maybe $200,000 in redoing those fields? Would be state-of-the-art little league fields for boys? Because it'd be hard to say no. Once we do this for the girls' softball little league, that we don't do it for the boys and then there's American League and a National League? Are they each going to have their own field that's lit up? Seems like it would be appropriate if the administration wants to get behind this, that you'd have to say, yeah, we'll do that too. Um, and then I do have a question, um, uh, for, um, the Director of League who's on tonight. Can you tell me what, what's the total amount of any type of accounts you have? Like how much do you guys have in savings, investments or whatever for the, for your league?
Our annual budget is approximately $110,000, I believe. I've, I've never been a treasurer. Um, and we, we typically have between 50 and 60,000 dollars in the bank. We, we try and run it a, uh, you know, it was a nonprofit. We try and run it a zero balance year to year, but obviously have bankable funds. So we're, we're typically 50 to 60,000.
In total savings, all your accounts together, whatever, whatever they are, you have between 50 and 60,000 dollars?
Right, I mean, obviously it fluctuates, but yes, that would be the net at the end of the year.
Okay. So what, you start off with more at the beginning of the year, but then you have expenses and things like that? So that's.
Right, right, yeah, 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 you get all the money at the, at the beginning at the registrations. Um, and like I said, we typically, we have been budgeting 10 to 15,000 of that, of our expenditures at Ford Doody Yellow. But we, we pretty much tapped out everything we can do there. So, no, that, that, that money would go towards the lights in addition to other ways of raising some capital.
Okay. I think we have a lot more questions that are not answered than, you know, answered for questions. And I do support this, this, I do support the lights as long as, you know, it goes to the proper channels. Um, but I think there's going to be some resistance up there, which I guess I would understand as well. We've gone from having no softball field up there to having a softball field up there and now wanting to put lights up. Uh, and speaking with Anthony, we do have one lit field in town that's used by both little league divisions, national and American. It's used by the girls softball program and it's also used by the adult softball, Hayden Field. But everyone has equal use of it. And the great thing about that is there's no neighbors where that is and that's probably why it was easier to put up. That's my points.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Uh, Mr. Dewitt.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chris Dewitt. Uh, uh, through you to, to, to Mr. Elliott. Uh, I just want to be clear, you know, um, is, is Fairfield Little League Girls Softball, uh, committing to paying the town $15,000 a year? If we can come to some agreement until this is paid off, is that, is that the number you're looking at?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Whatever the, whatever the bond costs.
I, I'm looking for the yearly amount you're willing to put forward. So for $150,000, you know, we're talking, this is going to take eight years, I think, is probably right, seven years.
No, I think it's, I think we're talking 206 over 20 years is, is, uh, it, it's 3% comes out to like 266, I think.
Right, that, that is what we're looking at, sorry, I'm sorry to butt in, but.
Well, that's how, that's how long we're bonding it for.
Bonding it for 20 years.
Yeah, so we're bonding it for that long, but I'm not, I, I'm expecting Fairfield League, Fairfield Little League Girls Softball to pay us back before that. Is, is that your plan?
It is a plan, uh, or, or a goal. Uh, we intend to do a heavy fundraiser at the beginning. Um, and we're going to obviously have to raise our fees a little bit, um, every year. But our, our goal was 17 years was an internal goal. I, you know, don't, don't know for sure, but.
Okay, well, just, so listen, um, I was a Fairfield Little League Girls Softball coach and father for, for many years, as I, I'm sure you know. Um, uh, I think we have to, we, when and if we come up with something, it's got to be less than a 17-year payback period, that's just me. Uh, so we would need, you know, Fairfield Little League Girls Softball to make some monetary commitment every year. Um, I want to talk about the lights just for one second. You know, um, somebody brought this up the other day, it hadn't occurred to me. Uh, but to, to add on to what Mr. Walsh said, I bet the, I bet that the people who live up there don't mind the fact that there's lights, but they, I bet they might mind that, you know, when today, 6 o'clock, man, that place clears out because it's dark. But now you're going to be having people driving in the neighborhood at 10, 10, 11 o'clock, right? Because I've been in Hayden Field where it was 10, 11 o'clock. So that's the real issue for me. It's not the fact that somebody's going to not like a light in their backyard, it's going to be the fact that they don't want people driving around the neighborhood. Um, so, so that's that. Um, for me.
Do you, I, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Dewitt, do you, do you mind if I, uh, jump in for a second here? I don't mean to cut you off, but, um.
But you are, so is, is it about this point? Is it about, uh?
Well, I just, I just wanted to, I just wanted to say that, um, you know, we, we understand that there are issues with this and so we're willing to, I, I, I just, you know, in the interest of time, I, and the administration's willing to, to hold meetings with the residents and that we go back and do some work. We get, we're getting the point, we got the point. And so we're, you know.
Listen, I think I can get two minutes to tell you why I'm not supporting this, if you don't mind, Mr. Smith, right?
No, no.
So, so here's what I'm, so, Mr. Elliott, I want to support this nothing, more than any other thing on this list between you and I. I just want there to be some agreement in place and, uh, some equitable understanding that with, with the neighbors. Uh, I also want to bring up the fact that if this doesn't go tonight, I mean, I would support this as a bond resolution in three months when we're there or two months? I don't think, I, I don't want to portray this as if we don't do it tonight, it's not going to happen till next year. So, um, I would certainly be an advocate of adding it to the, a, a future meeting. Um, not, not waiting a whole another year for the non-recurring capital, just putting that out there.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Dewitt. And, and Mr. Smith, to your point is that I, you're committing to working through some of the questions that have come up tonight.
Definitely.
So we can get to a resolution and support this, which we all want to do. We just want to make sure, I guess, in the essence, we're talking about softball, that all the bases are covered.
We're, we're committed to working through it. We understand the issues that, that are being brought up and the first select woman understands that she's willing to, uh, work with the league and the residents, uh, to, to, you know, to solidify this.
All right, thank you. With that said, are there any further questions, uh, from the board to Mr. Elliott or Mr. Smith in this matter? I don't see any. Mr. Elliott, we'll be, um, we'll be back with this project as, as Mr. Dewitt said, just because it doesn't make it through tonight doesn't mean it doesn't make it through. We just need to, to get some of our questions answered.
All right, thank you, folks.
Thank you for being here. So now we need an, uh, an amendment to Exhibit 1, Mr. Matola.
Well, I'll make an amendment to remove the softball field lights for the reasons that have been discussed. Again, I'm in favor of this, but we need to, um, you know, cross the Ts, dot the Is here. So, uh, motion to amend by removing the softball lights, $206,000.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second's the motion.
Mr. Dewitt, uh, seconds the motion. So any further Attorney, just like them?
Yeah, I think that, just to be clear, I think the definitive amendment would be if you are deleting the 206,000 from that, uh, from the exhibit, we would then change the amount, uh, on the front of the resolution in numbers one and two, that amount would be $4,303,000. And we would also change the, uh, listed categories in the first resolve. Then we'd be categories one to 14, we'd renumber the categories. So that would be the definitive amendment.
Okay, I just wanted to get to, to that point. So I, I was going to vote on the elimination of $206,000, would I have to do that? So just take it.
I think you can vote on it all as one amendment, what I just said, if you want to, because it puts one plus from the other.
Okay, so we'll make a motion to amend Exhibit 1 to be, for the total, the grand total town and Board of Ed non-recurring capital to $4,303,000.
Yep.
And for projects, now that the softball field lights are out, for 14 projects is listed on Exhibit 1. Because we have the Board of Ed, correct? Can we do it that way?
Correct, if you'd have, your, your first exhibit, the first under the town, it would be one to 13 and Board of Education would be number 14. You would carry that over to, uh, uh, Resolution 1 where you'd say project item categories listed items one through 14. Uh, and then you would change the amount also at the heading of the resolution and in the first and second resolution to 4,303,000.
Okay, so I just want to vote on the amendment as I just, I just laid out, right? I can do that. So can I have a second, Mr. Dewitt?
You have to also change Exhibit A the same way you changed Exhibit 1.
Correct. Correct.
So I'll, I'll second the motion to change Exhibit 1 and Exhibit A in the exact same way as just referenced.
Okay, so.
Along with the body.
Just twice, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that amendment, as I just stated, is for Exhibit 1 and Exhibit A. Mr. Dewitt seconds, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Well, that is unanimous. Okay, so I'm going to read from the bond resolution at this point. As recommended by the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen, the town of Fairfield hereby appropriates the sum of $4,303,000 to fund all costs associated with the non-recurring capital projects described on the amended Exhibit A attached here to, inclusive of planning, design and engineering fees of the professional fees, demolition, construction and oversight costs and temporary and permanent financing costs collectively the projects. In the amount of such appropriation allocated to each project is set forth in the amended Exhibit A. Any reallocation of unused, unused bond proceeds from one project category listed as items 1 through 14 on amended Exhibit A to a different project category listed on amended Exhibit A that would cause the cost of such project to exceed the cost listed on amended Exhibit A shall require approval by the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance and the representative town meeting. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous. Exhibit A was listed one, two, three, four, five times. So it is, it is covered, no doubt about it. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Attorney Sashin, for being here tonight.
You're welcome. Have a good night, all.
Thanks, John.
Good night, John.
Okay. Okay, got your message, Mr. Matola. All right, we're on to item number nine. To hear, consider, and act upon the minutes of November twenty-four, 2020, January fifth, 2021, February second, 2021, and February sixteen, 2021. Can I have a motion to put these minutes before us? Mr. Testane seconded by Ms. Charlton. Okay, these minutes are before us. We'll go to the first minutes for the Board of Finance Quarterly Meeting Tuesday, November twenty-fourth, 2020. Any questions, comments on these minutes? Okay, all those in favor of the minutes for November twenty-fourth, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous approval. For the Board of Finance Regular Meeting Draft Minutes, Tuesday, January fifth, 2021. Questions, comments on these minutes? Say none. All those in favor of the minutes for January fifth, 2021, say aye?
Aye.
That is unanimous approval. For the Board of Finance Special Meeting Draft Minutes, Tuesday, February second, 2021. Questions, comments on these minutes? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous approval. And the last Board of Finance Quarterly Review Meeting Draft Minutes, Tuesday, February sixteen, 2021. Questions, comments on these minutes? Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, it is approved. All the minutes from November twenty-fourth, January fifth, February second, and February sixteen are approved. Going to item number ten, to hear, consider, and act upon any communications. Mr. Schmidt, I'll start with you.
Aye, nothing further.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dewitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the Budget Committee, Ms. Carpenter sent out the budget schedule. So all the dates are in the schedule, you know, when we passed the schedule in December. But what the Budget Committee does is creates, you know, who's gonna talk on one night. That schedule was sent out today. Please be on the lookout for it. You'll notice on the schedule, there's snow days that we probably don't need because, you know, we've got this virtual environment, even if it does snow. So you can just, you can kind of ignore those. But you'll also notice in the schedule that we did keep the annual open session that we have with the public on the second Saturday, or second or third Saturday of March. I guess we'll have to figure out if that's gonna happen, if that'll be a virtual meeting, or if it doesn't happen. But it's still on the schedule, and we probably need to address that in the next week or so. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dewitt. Thank you, Committee, for putting this together. I just want to get the board's opinion. On the eleventh, which is next Thursday, a week from Thursday, the eleventh of March, the not-for-profit organizations are lined up, signed up to meet with us, scheduled to meet with us as a board. I was thinking, other than Pequot and any not-for-profit that may have had an increase, I have not seen that. So other than Pequot, have the rest only, will only come on before us if one of our board members requests it. Otherwise, I was not gonna have them come before us, unless there's an increase. So I just want to get sensitive body, the board's opinion on that, because I don't want to make that, I don't want to just do that arbitrarily, and then you guys ask where are these not-for-profits. So, Mr. Dewitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My recommendation is similar to yours that have Pequot because they are, A, their number from last year is increasing. They are the single largest not-for-profit. But I'd also ask that we bring in Operation Hope. Operation Hope is a new not-for-profit that was not in the budget previously. And I think it's, it makes sense to bring in any new not-for-profit for, you know, maybe a five-minute overview of what they're gonna do with the money. I'll leave it up to the board.
I agree. So, yes, we would want to do that, Mr. Dewitt. We would want to bring that. I think that occurs to them, too.
Yeah, I think it's verbal. Both of us, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so we have Pequot, Operation Hope, and that was it as far as your recommendation. If the board has other recommendations and you'd like us to, you know, like us to ask to bring someone forward, just let me know, and we'll make sure that they are there. But as of now, it's just Pequot and Operation Hope. Okay, any other questions on the budget? If not, I just have one more act of communication. So the budget deliberations start on the eleventh, which is Thursday. On Wednesday the tenth, we will post a special meeting, and, Mr. Schmidt, we still have to do that because I don't think I've seen that yet. The tenth of Wednesday, it's seven o'clock, and we will have before us the tax assessor, Mr. Murray, along with the Revaup Company, and they will make a presentation to us in regards to the Revaup. They'll have a presentation. We will, at that point, be free to ask questions. It's important that they do get before us, before budget deliberations, considering the fact that, you know, the grand list and the budget and the anomaly this year. So they will be before us on the tenth, seven o'clock. It'll be a special meeting. And then we'll start Monday, Thursday, the day after, with budget deliberations. Any questions on the meeting on the tenth? Okay, saying no. We will go to item number eleven, which is to adjourn. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Testane, seconded by somebody.
I figured Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Walsh, okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, it is unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Have a great day tomorrow.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.